I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:00 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Shockley?
Here.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Here.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Here.
President Lima?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. In the event of an emergency, those present this evening can exit out the back doors either labeled one or two to the back parking lot or front lawn of town hall. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 19th, 2023, January 23rd, 2024, February 15th, 2024, and February 27th, 2024, as a block.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Foring the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
At this time, I'll take entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th, January 23rd, February 15th, and February 27th.
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pasqua. Any discussion? Clerk, did you receive edits?
Just your edits that I received tonight.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Foring the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Moving on to public acknowledgements and commendations, we have Women's History Month. I will read the proclamation. Whereas in March, we celebrate Women's History Month and and honor the contributions of women in American history despite hardship, discrimination, and exclusion. And whereas we also celebrate more than 200 years of women bravely serving in the US military, today, more than 200,000 women represent 16% of our nation's armed forces, and we honor more than 2 million women veterans. And whereas while we honor the contributions of women throughout American history, wage and opportunity gaps continue to exist. Women earn 84 cents for every dollar earned by a man, more than $400,000 less over her 40-year career, and women of color earn even less. Women are less likely to have professional and technical jobs or hold leadership positions, and women spend more time than men performing unpaid household work and providing child and elder care. And whereas at the current pace, women are not expected to reach pay parity until 2059, efforts to close wage and opportunity gaps must address the systemic barriers to fulfill participation and the multitude of biases that hold women, particularly women of color, LGBTQIA+ women, and women with other diverse identities and their families back. And whereas Rhode Island has been home to some of the most prominent influential women of the last century, including National Women's Party founder and women's suffrage advocacy leader Alva Vanderbilt Belmont, cultural preservationist Squaw Princess Redwing, labor advocate Margaret Ackroyd, the first woman to ever play baseball, Lizzie Murphy, first African American to sing at Carnegie Hall, Matilda Cicoretta Joyner Jones, first African American to serve as a First Circuit federal judge, O'Roderi Thompson, just to name a few. And whereas despite relentless obstacles, women answer the call for public service in the community, serving on the town council and chairing on Coventry's boards, committees, and commissions, and as directors and staff members within the town of Coventry. Whereas the 2024 theme for Women's History Month is Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. This theme recognizes women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Hillary Lima, Council President of the Town of Coventry, confirms the Coventry Town Council declares March 2024 as Women's History Month in the Town of Coventry and encourage our community to observe and celebrate trailblazing women, past and present, and take action now to reverse continued inequities and ensure gender equality for future generations of girls. In testimony whereof, and on behalf of the Honorable Town Town Council, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 12th day of March 2024. Any discussion from members of the council? Hearing none. Moving on to public comment on docketed items that are are there any members of the public who'd like to make a public comment on docketed items only? Those items on the agenda? Step forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Any members of the public on Zoom? Public comment on docketed items only. Raise your hand to be let in, unmute yourself, and state your name and address for the record. Public comment going once? Twice? Three times? Public comment is now closed. Moving on to licenses. Item A, new mobile food establishment license, Rhode Island Kona LLC, Kona Ice of Warwick slash East Greenwich yearly license. This is on pages 53 to 54 in your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the license?
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Discussion? Manager Perlo, any comments on this license? Is there someone from Kona Ice present on Zoom this evening or in council chambers? All right. Any further discussion from members of the council? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Foring the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Item B, new mobile food establishment license, Lemon Lane yearly license. Do I hear a motion to approve the license?
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Uh, Manager Perlo, any comments? Um, would you like to come forward? Just talk about the the truck now? All right.
I actually do want to know what it does.
Yeah. Do you serve lemonade? All right.
Lovely.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion, members of the council? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Foring the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Yeah. Do you make special council meeting house calls?
We will pay. No, we'll pay.
Clarifying.
Yeah.
Solicitor.
Moving on to election and or appointment of town officials. Item A, town council appointments. Council District Two vacancy. We have four individuals this evening, Russell McGilvery, Leo Blaze, Cheryl Kane, and Alisa Capaldi. This, of course, for members of the public who may not be aware, Jennifer Ludwig submitted a resignation at the end of January from the seat. Based on the charter, the town council is the one who fills this vacancy, given how close we are to the end of the District Two term, which ends this November, a four-year term that's ending this November. The person appointed to the seat would fill the remainder of that term. This evening, we'll invite each individual to come up to the microphone, introduce themselves, talk a little bit about their interest in the appointment, and then the council will have the opportunity to ask questions and and engage in discussion. Uh, so first, we have Mr. McGilvery. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Uh, Russell McGilvery, 3 Ivy Drive.
All right. If you just want to talk a little about your interest in the appointment and a little about yourself.
Sure. Uh, well, Russ McGilvery, I've been a resident in town for 30 years. Between my wife and I, we have five kids, five grown children. Three of them are Oakers, though they've graduated from high school. Unfortunately, I'm a product of West Warwick. I graduated West Warwick High School in 1984.
Hey, I resemble that.
Yes. Well, I'll tell you what, it may it makes the Thanksgiving Day game very interesting at my house as to who gets to sit on what side of the field. Right out of high school, I joined the military. So I went away from '84 to '88 in the Army, came home in 1988 and got on the fire department. I worked full-time with the Harris Fire District Town for a year, went to the Washington Fire District for another year as a firefighter, and then in 1990, I was appointed to the West Warwick Fire Department. I stayed there for 21 years, retired in 2011 as a battalion chief. I retired to take the deputy chief spot in the East Greenwich Fire District. As we all know, in 2013, the East Greenwich Fire District ceased to exist, and we became a municipal department, the East Greenwich Fire Department. And in January of that next year of 2017, I'm sorry, 2014, I was appointed fire chief. And I stayed there till 2017. During that time, um, in West Warwick, I stayed in the Army Reserve, and I was deployed to Iraq in 2006, 2007, where I worked in a combat support hospital in the emergency medical treatment section. We were sadly very busy. Um, I retired from the reserves in 2010, and after East Greenwich in 2018, I went to Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency. I spent a couple of years there. And from 20,000 till now, I work at Quonset State Airport as a crash rescue firefighter. I have an associate's degree in fire science from CCI. I have a bachelor's degree in fire science from Providence College, and I have a master's degree in public administration from Anna Maria College in Paxton, Mass. Um, I currently serve as an adjunct faculty member and teach in the fire science program at CCI. Um, trying to, I think that's about it.
Maybe talk a little about your why you submitted your name for the point.
All right. Um, so my civic duty is I also serve as the vice president for the Central Coventry Fire District Board of Directors. And I'm looking to come to the council, bring some of that experience with me, but also look at the bigger picture of how the town is run, not just the fire district, but to serve the community in a bigger position.
Discussion from members of the council? Councilwoman Shockley?
So, great to have you here. I appreciate your service in global, national, and local, and all those efforts.
Thank you.
How much longer do you have in your position with the Central Coventry Fire District?
Two years, I believe. That's still left on the board.
Okay. Um, my concern with this being a short-term appointment is that the Central Coventry Fire District would then have to have a special election as well. So if this was a you were running and you were on the ballot for me to vote for?
Sure.
I might be like, yeah, you know, I've heard his campaign, but this is a appointment for a few months. So, you know, I'm concerned about the service you're already giving to the town, someone leaving that position in a very necessary position over there instead of possibly running in a few months.
Yeah, run again in Seculon Park.
So that's that's a concern for me is that another town department would have an issue. But, um, like, as far as your expertise and your ability, especially with some things going on, you'd be a very interesting candidate.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Pasqua?
Thank you for applying, first of all. Appreciate your service as Councilmember Shockley mentioned.
Thank you.
Do you plan, if you are appointed to District Two, do you plan on rerunning in November for the seat?
I would. I would. I would try to stay in the position.
Is that all?
I got a couple more.
Oh, you turned your mic off, so I assumed you were done. Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. I have some, but I'll let you go.
Okay. So council requires a significant commitment of time, uh, two meetings a month at minimum, sometimes more. Agenda packets can be over 100 pages at a time that you got to go through before a meeting. Uh, how does that line up with your commitment to be able to to make those meetings and and fulfill the the role in totality?
Oh, that it shouldn't be a problem. Shouldn't be an issue. Uh, my wife won't be happy about it, but, um, we work 24-hour shifts down at at the state airport. So with the one-on, two-off schedule that they have, you know, I have four or five days a week to, you know, concentrate on these responsibilities outside of mowing the lawn and shoveling the snow.
Vice President LeBlanc?
In your professional experience, how much experience do you have with finance and issues with budgets and contracts and doing those type of things?
Sure. Um, much the way it is now. The East Greenwich Fire District was its own municipality. So the fire chief, myself as a deputy fire chief, and our tax collector would sit down and the treasurer would sit down and develop, you know, a multimillion-dollar budget every year worried about Blue Cross, Delta Dental, personnel reasons. We were our own municipality aside from the town. So who's going to, you know, paw the who's going to paw the snow from the stations in the winter? Building maintenance, truck maintenance, personnel issues, uh, like I said, Blue Cross, Delta Dental, all the stuff that the town manager has to worry about is the same, just with a 32-man professional fire department in the room.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions, members of the council? What do you see as the, say, top three challenges facing the town? Based on your experience and paying attention to what's going on, what do you see as the top three issues that you'll face if appointed to the seat?
Keeping taxes under control, um, schools, and the fire district consolidation and merger. Those are probably the top three things right now because you're already worried about the schools and the sewers going up Reservoir Road. You're spending a lot of money pumping the system every day. That's a great idea to put the sewers up there. But the school budget is part of the bigger problem. It's part of the town's problem. You know, I'm sure we have to build schools and take care of the town departments as well. You're buying trucks. You're doing a lot of work. I see, you know, budget and taxes as big.
Okay. Any further discussion, members of the council? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Blaze. You want to come forward? Just state your name and address for the record and introduce yourself. Just make sure the microphone's on. Just push it up. There you go.
Leo Blaze, 40 Bang Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. So this year will mark my 62nd year as a resident of Town of Coventry. We moved here in 1963, and I now live across the street where I grew up, at the end of Bank Street. I've been in politics since 1968, when my father ran for town council, and then it was district number four. And literally, I grew up seeing the abilities and the effects that public service could have on the town, on the constituents, and on the community of which I have made my home for so long. I have, uh, experience. I served for 18 years in the state senate with the constituents of Situate, Foster, and Coventry. I worked alongside with my members on the other side of the political aisle, and I made sure that anytime I was asked to help out someone, I never looked at the party label. I always did what I could to help in my capacity as a member of the senate. I'm a big fan of Councilman Pasqua's little podcasts. I think the town's decision to buy a septic dump truck for the high school is brilliant, and that's the type of idea generating that I would like to bring to the council. I've also had a lot of work in the budgetary process. I served on the Senate Finance Committee under former Senator Lenihan for, I believe, four years, and then under Senator Caprio at the State House. I served on just about every committee in the senate because at the time, there's only five or six of us that were elected. I've been involved in the community. You can see that my resume. I've been active in town for my entire life, love the place, and want to continue to contribute to help out the town and and bring this bring this forward.
Uh, discussion from members of the council? Yes. Um, do you want to elaborate more on why your interest in the position today?
Giving back. We were we were brought up as kids in an environment where our parents were involved in their church lives, my father in the in the public life. He was on the town council, ran for the House when Frank Sherman passed away against Steve Anderson, who's now also departed. Then he ran for senate, and then the credit unions closed with the Dupree mess. So 1990 was not a good year to be Republican in Rhode Island. He was defeated in the election, and I decided after conversing with the family that I would run for the senate in 1992, and I remained there until 2010. So now we're 14 years since I left the setup. So I've always been the kind of guy that wants to get involved and help out and bring my ideas to the table. I think that it's it's a duty that we have, but because of the the environment in which we all exist as public officials, there aren't a lot of people that want to commit to the scrutiny and commit to the the political pressures that are put on people. I've been involved in community organizations my entire life. I was an Eagle Scout with the Boy Scouts of America, served on several nonprofit boards and commissions, all as a way of moving the ball forward and making the community, whether it's locally or on the state level, a better place in which to raise a family and ultimately grandkids. Familiar with the time constraints that have been described by Councilman Pasqua. I'm semi-retired, and it's a way for me to divert the extra time I have to the energies of the town council.
Questions, members of the council? Councilwoman Pasqua?
Mr. Blaze, if you are appointed to District Two, are you planning on being sort of a placeholder for the time being, or do you envision yourself running for the seat officially in November?
I'm going to approach that with a will see. Again, I have never served on the town council, so I I can't honestly tell you I have a frame of reference from which to decide whether I would run for reelection or not. That would depend on, as you pointed out, the time constraints and the other responsibilities I have as a father, grandfather, and and I want to make sure that that all meshes well because it's important for me to have a family life as well as a public life. So I'm not going to commit to running. If that's a deal breaker, then so be it. But I don't think it's fair to anyone, including the council, that I tell you today, I'm definitely going to run when you don't have the first clue about whether or not this is going to gel with what your life is doing right now. So I'll take I'll take the the time until November. You have until June or so to decide, and we go from there.
Further questions from the council? What do you see as the the top challenges? I'll ask the same question of everybody. The top challenges facing the town, uh, if you were to get this point?
First thing that I've seen that nobody's really talking about is the unfunded pension liability. Infrastructure, you're doing a good job with investing in the equipment, like the septic pump truck to fix the problem at the high school at $1,750 a day. We did a bond in 2012 for the new dump trucks when we collaboratively decided to make a no bid, no barrel recycling ordinance in the Town of Coventry that brought the abilities of us to save money at the transfer station by generating more pass-through of recyclables and taking that out of the main trash stream. That and in the the school, the infrastructure is the big point. You've got buildings that are falling apart. They've got, and if you continue to go out and bond that debt, you're just digging a bigger and bigger hole that takes longer and longer to get out of. I know that sometimes bonds are a necessary evil because you want to be able to grab the opportunity and fund like a municipal trash program. So that is really working on the spending side and working on the taxation side, and then deciding what are the priorities that you're going to divert the the resources available at the town level? Is there are there grant writers within the town system? I don't know. But you have your hands full with just the legal expenses, no, uh, no aspersions cast on Councilor Angel, but you have your hands full with legal expenses all by itself, and those are not something you can plan on. The bills come, you have to pay them. The problems come, you have to pay them. The town gets sued, or we decide to take someone to court, not mentioning any names, but you do what you have to do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Very welcome. Oh, in the packet, I brought a copy of a bill that was passed in 2006, which originally I thought was passed during the global construction waste project when Resource Recovery was trying to put a dump off Calventown Road, but it's a bill that says to DOT, no through trucking on South Main Street. Now, during the construction of the Sandy Bottom Road Bridge, it was a necessity to have trucks be able to cut through to get through 3 and ultimately 95. But now that Taiyo Avenue is is on Taiyo Avenue, Sandy Bottom is completed, I think it would be a good move to revisit that with DOT, reinstall the signs, and ask the police chief for some selective enforcement to send the message through the trucking community that that's a residential neighborhood, highly trafficked, not a good sidewalk system. You got kids on bikes or people walking dogs, and all of a sudden, a 53-foot comes down the road. I think it's better to divert that down 117 onto Sandy Bottom. As the other thing I want to point out is that I love to read. I was known in the senate as reading every bill. And if you watch enough Capital TV, I was the guy picking out the mistakes that could, you know, prevent problems from going forward. I know that the job, I know what the job takes, and I'm I'm putting myself up there to ask for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Ms. Kane. Same thing, just state your name and address for the record. Make sure the mic's on and introduce yourself to the council and the public.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Town Council. Attorney Steve Angel and Town Manager Dan Perillo. My name is Cheryl Kane. I live at 185 Free Schoolhouse Road, and I'm here to ask for your vote to be in District Two. I feel that I've had 33 years of municipal government I've been in, and I have worked in the town clerk's office, which I know that you deal with licensing, which I have done in the past. I also have worked in the finance department. I did payroll, attendance, took care of all the quarterly taxes. I read all the contracts. I've read the subdivision regulations. I've read everything you can possibly imagine. I read for knowledge. I don't read for entertainment. So I do have many years of knowledge. I've lived in Coventry since 1964. I have seen it grow. I have seen all the developments. I used to be in the middle of Taiyo Avenue for three hours, and not one car would come by. So I feel that I do have the knowledge and the and the qualifications to be your appointee for District Two.
Can you talk about your interest in the seat?
Yes. My interests?
Yes.
Yes.
What's driven you to put your name in?
What's driving me here is that I have seen how the Town of Coventry has changed over the years. I would like it to be beautiful again. I feel that we have to be stronger and with our ordinances or resolutions that we have to enforce them because we, as the council, we are responsible for the quality of life of our residents and our taxpayers in Coventry, and I feel that we are kind of like just letting them go. You've been here for 30 years. Now it's time to bring in the new people. We don't really care about your quality of life and so forth and so on. So I feel that as a District Two person, that I will listen to our taxpayers and residents. I will help them as best as I can to my ability, which I have done all my life for work, working for municipality. If you talk to any taxpayers that know me, they will tell you that I have gone way beyond to help them. I have made their days so calm, and so their blood pressure has dropped because I have gone to do the research for them because that's what I am. I'm a person that helps, and I want to help as much as I can because of my knowledge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from members of the council? Councilwoman Pasqua?
Thank you for applying for the seat and your interest in this. Is there anything that, um, like a personal interest or a goal that has caused you to want to do this? Is there anything you particularly want to address? And if you had the ability to just, you mentioned ordinances. If you had the ability to write an ordinance and everybody would agree with it, what would it be?
Well, when I when I drive around town, um, I used to drive around during during my lunch hours, and I would see how, um, people nowadays that have been moving to Coventry, they have been bringing their, um, all their they have been bringing their all their mobile homes, their ski dews. They will go to different, yeah, like for garbage, they'll pick up people's other, you know, people's garbage. And then they put it all over their lawn and their driveways. And I feel that what's what's happening is we're we're instead of being a residential area, that we're becoming junkyards. So I think that if we are, we want to keep our residents and we want to keep our taxpayers. If you want to bring people in that are gonna pay, you know, seven thousand, eight thousand dollars of these homes, you can't expect them to be next to any of the people that don't have respect or don't live the same way as that. I mean, I understand that we do have rules and regulations and we have put these into play, so we wouldn't have these issues. And I don't feel it's really fair for the taxpayers to take care of it when you already have the ordinances in play. You know, they shouldn't have to go and get an attorney because you have this, you have all these documents, you have everything right here. So what you're doing is you're you're making all these ordinances, then you say, ah, that's okay. We we have we have an ordinance. We're not gonna enforce it, but we have one. And that's who I feel. I feel that we need to be strong again. We need to. We need to become together as a team because that's what we're here for. We want, we want Coventry to grow, but we want it to grow where everyone is happy. You know, we don't want to just, you know, if you want to do, I know that I have been hearing that you want to have mixed use. So if you want mixed use, are you gonna put a chainsaw mill or a mill, you know, woodmill next to someplace where you're gonna have a condo? I don't think you would do that because the mixed use, you want to be able to have everybody happy in that mixed use. So that's why I just, I just want to, I just want Coventry to be Coventry again. That's all.
Further questions from members of the council? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, lastly, is Ms. Capaldi. Just state your name and address for the record and introduce yourself.
Is this on? Alyssa Capaldi, Nineteen Audubon Lane, Oak, Rhode Island, which is Coventry. If the president can read a teleprompter, I can too. I want to thank you all for this opportunity of coming before you and expressing why I'm the ideal candidate for the District Two appointment. I've been, I was born and raised here in Coventry. I am an oker. A gentleman that said he wasn't. I graduated from Coventry High. After completing my education at Emerson College in Boston with a BS in Communications, I ventured out to Los Angeles to pursue a career in communications and marketing. After fifteen years, I learned and has such a fulfilling wealth of invaluable experiences out there. But I realized I was missing something. I needed to come home and take my daughter here so we could be in a family community with roots. And I wanted my daughter to, I wanted to plant roots for my daughter and grow up here because I had a great childhood when I was here. For over two decades, I have navigated the dynamic landscape of marketing and communications, serving national and global corporations. My role demands the understanding of strategic initiatives, translating complex objectives into accessible language for diverse audiences. I take pride in crafting and executing strategic plans that drive towards our main goals, managing budgets, forging partnerships, and adeptly resolving the challenges that arise, all while engaging and inspiring those around me and employees that work for me. Beyond the professional realm, my foundation lies in the values instilled by my parents who are here. My father, Judge Arthur Capaldi, has been a beacon of integrity and virtue throughout my life. He taught me the importance of honesty, respect, confidence, reliability, responsibility, and commitment as well as empathy. These principles guide me in every decision and action, shaping me into the leader that I am today. The recent honor bestowed upon my father by this council a couple of months ago was amazing, and I thank you for that. The naming of the courtroom, the presenting with a key to the town, it served as a poignant reminder of the profound impact that one person can have on a town and on a community. Witnessing those accolades and recounting the countless contributions to Coventry stirred within me my me a profound sense of duty and purpose. I wanted to give back. I wanted to make a difference. And that's why I'm here today. I recognize the weight of the issues before this council and the responsibility that comes with public service. If appointed, I pledge to collaborate closely with each one of you, fostering an environment of respect, camaraderie, and shared vision. Together, we can tackle the challenges facing Coventry head on, striving to create meaningful change that positively impacts the lives of our fellow residents. I would like to address a few of the big issues that you guys are facing and if I join that seat, I will be facing. The idea of a municipal fire department makes total sense to me. Just like in working in my business, you need a direct within the means of your budget as far as the school department. They should work within the budget that they're given. And Johnson's Pond, there should be a resolution that keeps the pond as a recreational and natural environment for the residents to enjoy. I need to state, I am not afraid of challenges. Bring them on. In closing, I ask for your trust and confidence as we embark on this journey together. Together, let us build a brighter future for Coventry, one defined by progress, unity, unwavering commitment to communities' well-being. Thank you for considering my candidacy.
Thank you. Questions from members of the council? Councilman Pasqua?
Thank you for taking the time to apply for this seat and and your attention on this. So a question. If you are appointed to District Two, do you plan on rerunning in November?
Yes, I'm already, my campaign manager is my daughter right there. She's she's ready and waiting.
Beautiful. Love it. I've got another one for you. Actually, you answered those questions. You answered a lot of these questions. Oh, time. So the council meets twice a month, which is actually a lot for municipal councils, usually they're once a month. So this council meets twice a month and sometimes more. And of course, along with those frequent meetings comes large agenda packets, sometimes over a hundred pages. Think this week's a hundred seventy-one. So it's a lot of reading and it's a pretty big commitment. How does that line up with the commitments that you have today?
It lines up perfectly. Like, I wouldn't be here if I couldn't commit to it. Like I said, I understand commitment. I have to be committed to get the successes that I've had. And I wouldn't be here if I couldn't commit.
Further questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Discussion from members of the council? Vice President LeBlanc?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Capaldi to the District Two seat.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Shockley. Discussion. I just wanted to thank first, as as Councilman Pasqua did, those who submitted their names forward. I think everybody up here would agree that we don't have a lot of people throw their hat in the ring for these jobs. For any of them in town, we have a lot of boards, committees, commissions, fire districts, et cetera. And it's always a challenge to get people to run or to put their name in. I think Coventry is a community that can be a little bit brutal to one another, but I know that it's with the intent of having deep integrity and for the community and care about the community. And I appreciate the diversity and what we saw from those who put their hat in the ring, especially considering the fact that, in my opinion, this town is now seeing some of its most perennial issues all converge at the same time, every single one of them. So to to want to put your name in, knowing all of that, takes a lot of guts, in my opinion. And again, I just, you know, to to follow in the shoes of the commitment of Councilmember Ludwig, I appreciate as well, someone who gave this her all. So I just want to say that I, and I, with with Ms. Capaldi's appointment, if it if it so happens, I would appreciate the diversity of opinion. I think if you look at this council up here, we all bring a different skill set, different life experience, different roles that we play professionally and personally. And I I look forward to a council that has diverse perspectives, most importantly. Councilor Shockley?
Just to kind of continue on with what you were just saying. It was so impressive to see the resumes that came forward for an appointment that is going to be less than a year. I was really thrilled to hear different perspectives on the issues that are facing the town right now. And I'm hoping that those of you who don't get appointed tonight definitely think about either just coming to meetings, being part of meetings and running in November, if that is possible. For me personally, I don't see this as me trying to change District Two. Councilmember Ludwig was elected and I'm looking to see the next few months until the election of a new full-time District Two member just kind of be a continuation for the council. And hearing the agendas of some of you who may end up running at large, so I may be voting for some of you at another point. So I really appreciate that everyone came tonight.
Further discussion from the council? Councilman Pasqua?
I also just want to reiterate that I really appreciate everybody putting their applications in for this. And as President Lima said, there's a lot of big issues coming to our head right now. So it's a huge commitment and it takes a lot of guts to to do this. Not everybody agrees with you sometimes and you gotta have thick skin on that. And we all, obviously, a lot of us know that. So just again, I appreciate you guys putting the time in to do this. And if you're not selected for the seat, I think all of you have, could fill an important role in the in the near future in this town and different aspects.
Further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
I'm gonna swear. Madam Clerk, do you have the swearing in script? All right, thank you.
Do I do that or does clerk do that?
Madam Clerk, can you just come forward and swear in Ms. Capaldi? Straight up front here. You can do it at the podium if you want. Put the mic on.
Someone please swear that you will be true and faithful to the state, support the laws and constitution thereof in the constitutions of the United States of America and that you will well and truly execute the office of District Two Councilmember in the town of Coventry, Rhode Island, for a term of office to expire in November two thousand twenty-four or until another being reached in your place or until you are legally discharged herefrom.
I do? Is that how you answer it? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you can, you have to sign the oath and take your seat up at the dais. Yeah, why don't we take a five-minute recess? Thank you. Yeah, why, why don't we take a five-minute recess? Thank you. Going back to the agenda, still in election and our appointment of town officials. Item B, Kent County Water Authority, there's one opening. We have two names this evening, Kevin McGee and Ronald Flynn. Um, well, first up is Mr. McGee. Uh, if you could come forward, state your name and address for the record. And, um, just talk about your interest in the position.
Good evening. First off, I want to thank Ms. Cabaldi for being, allowing me to be the first item that you've dealing with on the town council. Welcome. Uh, my name is Kevin McGee, fifty Jervis Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. Uh, as some people say, they've been here for a while. Since nineteen fifty-eight, I've been here as a lifelong resident. So, uh, I've seen this community grow, uh, leaps and bounds. Um, my interest in serving in the Kent County Water Authority is to provide services and then protect the interest of the town of Coventry. My experience has been, uh, utility installation, water distribution, storm drainage, sanitary sewer, all of those utilities that I've dealt with personally installing. Uh, work to prepare and oversee contracts, consultants and subcontractors, provide hard bids and proposals, negotiate contracts. I've been able to, to read blueprints, estimate, uh, materials, oversee the installation of everything from four to twenty-four inch water transmission lines, oversee the installation of water service providers, uh, provide estimation for hard bid and heavy bid and utility contracts. Uh, my experience that I've served, uh, members of the organizations, I, I hold a Class A CDL license, Rhode Island Hoisting Engineers license, member of the American Public Works Association, the American Water Works Association, the American Society of Civil Engineers. Uh, I've been member of the Planning Commission here in town, Chamber of Commerce, Housing Authority, Comprehensive Plan Committee. I'm also served on the Board of Directors of the Utility Contractors Association of Rhode Island. I'm currently on the Board of Directors for the Rhode Island Public Works Association. Part of the goals I would have as your representative to the council, uh, to the Kent County Water Board is to address the drought conditions in the summer regarding the water restrictions, enhance the PFAS filtering in our water supply that's even in the wells, reduce to zero the lead services within our town, develop a twenty-twenty-four's bluffing schedule, keep the wedge, the webpage for Kent County Water Authority updated and current. In most part, provide monthly reports to the town council from the Kent County Water Authority. I serve now as Public Works Director in Coventry, see what the growth is happening. The position that's open now on the Kent County Water Authority was held by the prior, uh, Planning Director, Russ Crossman, uh, for the town of Coventry, and that's the position I believe that's open now. Uh, I look forward to providing continued service to the town and to look out for what's in the best interest of the town. I, like I said, lifelong resident and Councilman LeBlanc is my, uh, Councilman, I'm his constituent. And I will look forward to, uh, providing the services representing Coventry.
Questions, discussion for members of the council? Councilwoman Pasqua?
So I've been asked a few times by members of the public, uh, and what exactly does this board do? And I, I, I feel like I can't answer that question clearly. So is there a mission statement that we can provide of the Kent County Board or, or, or just like a generalized idea of what the board does for business overall?
Yeah, they, they have a website. They're governed by state law as well. Um, they're, they have a full website with bylaws. And they also, um, have to abide by, they have a full code of regulations as well when it comes to, uh, being a public, they're basically a public utility. Um, I don't know if anyone to my left wants to elaborate.
They provide us an annual report, which I can forward to you, just kind of summarizing what they do yearly. Um, actually, they've offered to come and present to the council. Uh, whenever the council is ready for them to kind of update them as to projects they're working on and, uh, different things that they are involved in.
Is there any?
Solicitor Angel.
They are a public utility.
Is there any compensation or anything associated with the board position for them?
I can't confirm that. Uh, Councilwoman Shockley?
Um, I guess I also lack some understanding. So you can be on a commission in Coventry or employed by the town of Coventry and be on this board, this authority?
Yes.
Um, are there, you might know this better than anyone up here. Um, are there issues, issues that your department would put in front of the Kent County Water Authority?
Well, currently many of the subdivisions and expansions of the water mains come before the Public Works Department for comment and for approval as part of the budgeting process and for the, uh,
Would you be able to vote on that? As the, so if?
I'm representing, I would be representing the town of Coventry. And a lot of this has got to do with water transmission expansion systems. You know, updating the filtering systems within, uh, the what, the wellheads at Mishnaut and expanding the, the actual overhead, overall, uh, service of Kent County Water Authority.
Thank you. Further discussion, members of the council, questions? Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Mr. Flynn, just come forward, state your name and address for the record. And introduce yourself to the public.
Thank you. Ronald Flynn, twenty-one Coventon Road, um, District Two. And, uh, I thank the council for giving me this opportunity. It's very different standing here and looking there. Um, and I'd like to thank my new representative for my district. Why am I doing this? Well, for one, um, I could never put in for this board because I work. I am retired now. I have extra time. Uh, as you know, I'm relentless. I'm passionate. Uh, spent over thirty-eight years at Brown University in facilities management. Um, I was elected to the CCD Fire, uh, Board of Directors in two thousand sixteen, and I served for three years. Uh, two thousand four to two thousand seven, I was on the Town of Coventry Personnel Board. And two thousand seven to, two thousand seven to current, I am the Chairman of the Planning Board for Coventry. I sit on the Technical Review Committee for Coventry, the task force to review and update town ordinances for Coventry. And I also review and update subdivision regulations and department checklist for Coventry. I graduated from Coventry. I am an Oka. I played hockey. Uh, my parents moved there in the fifties, lived on Johnson's Pond. And, uh, four generations, I just had a granddaughter. So we have four generations here. Um, I always had interest in, um, Kent County. And the reason when I was on the CCD, each fire hydrant, I didn't realize this, is I never knew the, the districts played, paid for lighting. So, and I also didn't know that they paid a maintenance fee for each fire hydrant. So every time you look at a fire hydrant, when I was on the board seven years ago, it was three hundred and fifty dollars. Now it's almost seven hundred and fifty dollars for maintenance of every fire hydrant that you look at from Kent County. So I wanted to look and see why that expense is so high, because the districts cannot afford to absorb that. Um, also I wanted to look at their facilities plan, uh, where they've been, where they're going. Um, and ways to reduce cost to residents. I've never had a house with sprinkler systems. I fear to put them on now, because if we have a drought, I don't know if anybody's had sprinkler system, but my bill goes from thirty dollars a month to almost two hundred. Um, that's a concern. Um, the other thing I wanted to, to do is look at the distribution updates, the expansion. I know the, you know, the Kent County is in the business of selling water. They're expanding into Warwick, they're expanding into North Kingston. And I think that should reduce rates for the homeowners. So this is why the reasons that I'm interested in, and also it does go hand in hand with planning. If you have Kent County water, you, it changes the density. So you can actually increase the density if you have water in sewers. So instead of a twenty thousand square foot lot in an R twenty, you can have a fifteen thousand square lot. So to know where this water line is going and where the expansion is going to go, I think is very significant for someone that sits on the planning board. So that's basically why I'm interested in this part. And I can do it now, being retired. I could never do it before, because I could never, I could never make the, the early afternoon meetings. And sometimes they're, they're doing, uh, site visits in, in the mornings. So I could never do that work. So I have the opportunity to give back more to the town I love, and that's why I put in for it.
Discussion, members of the council, questions for Mr. Flynn? Councilwoman Shockley?
Um, it's more a question for, I don't know if anyone on, um, the council would know how much time it does take up during a business day?
Their meetings are at three thirty in the afternoon. I don't know how long they go, um, but that's the meeting time. Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm just gonna, before I open it up for discussion, I'm just gonna throw, preface it with this. Um, given the fact that we have council members who have questions and want to learn more about Kent County Water Authority and have a better understanding, um, I think that's smart. It's a seven-year seat. So it's a, it's the longest seat that this council has the ability to appoint, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and also the other thing that I thought about as well was this, we, this council has had a track record of posting vacancies for board and committees, commission seats, and there's openings. This was not posted. Um, the, it's not, no fault of those who put their name in, but they put their name in because they knew it was open. They just happened to be paying attention. They knew that Mr. Crossman had passed, et cetera. Um, and I'm going to be making the same comment about the Planning Commission as well. Um, in my opinion, I think we have a directive to our, uh, our clerk or the town manager to pop, post this on the town website and Facebook page. Um, so that way we give an opportunity for all of the Coventry's public, if they would like to participate or put their hat in the ring. Um, and then also direct that the, uh, annual report of the Kent, latest annual report of the Kent County Water Authority be put in front of us and also, um, the link to their website that has all of their bylaws and rules and regulations, their meeting minutes. Um, you can see who else is on the board, understand its makeup. Um, but my, you know, I'll defer to the pleasure of the council, but in my opinion, if you would like to have a discussion about the candidates, great. But in my opinion, um, we should give the rest of the public an opportunity if they'd like to throw their name in, uh, because this was not something that was posted. Uh, with that, I'll open it up to my colleagues. Uh, Vice President LeBlanc?
Um, I, I think, uh, Member Pasqua had a couple uh questions. I think Member Shockley had some questions on, um, I would like to know site visits, how, how long they might be, how, how often they are. Um, if the meetings are at three or three thirty, when they are, uh, how much it would impact a, a workday? Because I would be concerned about um, uh, a town employee being appointed to this if it's going to take them away from the work that they're getting paid to do. Um, so I, I think we need a couple of answers there. Um, I would also like to know about the stipend, um, because I, I do believe there is a stipend for this board. What, what'd you say? Oh, yeah, I would like to, I would just like to put all the facts um in, in front of the public. Um, and I, I, I personally don't mind being transparent, quoting the job, seeing if there's other names um, that want to throw their uh name in the ring. Um, I do have to say, um, like, like I mentioned, uh, I'm not a huge fan of an employee of the town being on this board, and I do think, uh, Mr. Flynn, uh, we have entrusted him with our, one of our most powerful boards in town. Um, he would definitely have my support, but uh, I'm, I'm definitely fair game um in seeing if anybody else would be interested as well.
Further discussion from the council? Councilman Pasqua?
I'm gonna kind of uh echo Councilmember LeBlanc's comments. I, I think they're fair. They're, they're uh, they hold some water, no pun intended. Um, yeah, it was. But uh, you know, it's, I think we do need to do a little more digging because if we're going to appoint a paid employee to the town, just want to make sure that, you know, we're not creating sort of a tough spot for us. And then, of course, you know, Mr. Flynn uh has, has done a great job in planning, but uh if we've, if we have in the past advertised all our committees, then that's probably just, just to be fair and transparent to, to the taxpayers and people, probably what we should do. Um, and just for clarification, that doesn't mean that they, they have to reapply. They're still in the running.
We've heard them.
And we just, we just advertise it and we revisit this. Okay?
Further discussion? Uh, one thing, one perspective I will offer um in terms of consideration, and because I'm, I'm open to discussion with this council, this is very, very important. This is a public utility in town. I just want to emphasize that. But um, one thing that I have not been okay with, with this board is we've appointed people in the past and then I never hear from them. Never hear from them, and then we get slapped with, how big was that bill, Manager Perlo, two million plus dollars? That we then owe them? I don't know where. We also have sewer infrastructure that's coming later. We have a wastewater facilities plan. We have a school, a high school that's going to be getting a sewer. Um, there, while I agree that we need to look into how much the time commitment is during the day if a potential town employee were to take it on, but let's get creative. What is the prospect here in terms of having someone who is involved in our infrastructure? Who knows where roads are going to be paved? Who knows where sewers are going to go? Who is in the loop with the Technical Review Committee on Developments? Because obviously, um, you know, water hookup is essential there. Um, so I'm not saying there's a right or wrong answer here, but I'm asking people to just think outside the box. Um, I have, I just have major concerns about appointing people and then never hearing from them again. So whoever does get appointed, I have encouraged this council to maybe consider a resolution which may be non-binding, but would be something that we all know of, of consistent reports back. Um, I just, we have, we have very big money investments being made in infrastructure that would relate to a public utility, and I don't want to throw good money after bad. Um, and I think that having an open line of communication between a public utility, our public utility representation and um the appropriate uh branches of uh or, or departments in town is critically important. Um, you know, we can't afford to have surprises um when it comes to where a water line might be going. I mean, just if some members of this council can remember, I believe myself, Vice President LeBlanc and Councilman Shockley, when we had an emergency meeting because Kent County Water Authority was digging up Johnson Boulevard. And we were, you know, a Director McGee had come to us and said, look, this thing is open, this culvert, if we can get in there now, we don't have to pay to dig up the road and repave it again because Kent County Water is already doing it. That kind of perspective is something I think we need to consider with an appointment like this. Again, not saying that it, you know, it has to be a town employee, it has to be a member, I'm just throwing out there some I, perspectives for us to think about as this is an important appointment. Um, so that's my perspective on the issue. Vice President Blank?
I believe this is the remainder of the discussion. Um, perhaps um prior to the appointment, we have either Mr. Duckworth come in and provide us with a presentation, answer some of our questions um, the same evening, and/or we ask Kent County Water, I think the town manager said that they are ready and willing whenever we want them to, to come in front of us. So perhaps we get an update before we make the appointment, just a thought.
Yeah. Councilman Pasqua?
How many seats does Coventry get on the water authority?
Coventry gets two, Warwick gets two, West Warwick gets two, East Greenwich gets one.
Okay, and so I, I, the other person's Mr. Duckworth, that's obvious. Okay, and so he's active, we hear from him.
I, the email that this council received from him yesterday was the first time I've ever heard.
Okay, really?
I'm just being completely transparent with you. I don't, other council members can refute that. Maybe they've heard from him. I have not.
Wow, okay.
And he was appointed, I believe, in my first year on the council in twenty twenty-one.
So is there anything, any language anywhere, uh, maybe this is a question for Solicitor Angel, but uh, is there any language anywhere at all that gives some type of a attendance requirement uh where they're maybe not feeling, fulfilling their duties when it comes to this?
There are two things at play. We, we cannot regulate um a board member's conduct at an autonomous agency like the Kent County Water, Kent County Water Authority. However, you can condition appointment on certain objectives. And get that as a stipulation on the record of the time of appointment from the appointee as a means to, well, decide to reconsider or revoke the appointment should they fail to meet those benchmarks that the council had set.
Further discussion, questions from members of the council? So we've provided directives to town staff before our next meeting. Um, I think we should probably, why don't we kill two birds with one stone, manage a Prillo and uh see if the um executive director, whoever the staff member was at the Water Authority would come in and give the report that uh they've offered to do at this, uh, the next meeting. Yeah. Thank you. And um if we could send any other materials like the annual report and the link to their website as well for council members to look through. Okay. Moving on to item C, Planning Commission, we have one opening. Uh, we have Raymond Angel III and Glenn Skirka. Mr. Angel, if you'd like to come forward, uh, turn on the mic and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, members of the town council. Um, Madam Clerk, Solicitor Angel, no relation, just so that we're um fully transparent, um, and Town Manager, uh, Mr. Perlo. Um, I come before you asking for your support to become a member of the Planning Commission. Um, and I, I obviously was in the audience and I, I hear your concerns and, and the council can have discussion and I'll certainly um abide by uh whatever the decision is of the council this evening. Um, my background, I was last before some of you uh as a legal counsel to the Charter Review Commission. Um, and I saw um a, a group of people uh spend hours and hours and hours um trying to determine things that would better the community of Coventry. And as I sat there, I was in a different capacity, just more advisory um and preparing the report. But I realized that that's something that I wanted to do for this town. I wanted to be in a position where I could assist and better the community. Um, recently, I've been in town for, my wife, myself and my daughter, um, have been here for going on thirty-three years. We lived on Station Street for most of that time, uh, right up until October of last year. Um, we considered moving away from Coventry for a variety of reasons. Um, but we never found a place that we liked as much as Coventry, quite honestly. Um, we always wanted a one-floor house, uh, and uh, the opportunity came about. We just recently moved into a brand-new subdivision, Sunset Lake Circle, um, which is great. It's exactly what our family wanted. Um, and moving into that subdivision also made me realize how much has to go into planning uh a new subdivision, roads, um, infrastructure, um, and, and uh we were the number one. Um, I don't necessarily advise to be the first person in a new, brand-new subdivision. Um, it comes with its share of uh interesting issues like mail delivery and Amazon and different things like that. But we've overcome it and it's great. Um, and it's going to be, we plan on staying there. That's our forever. Um, you've got my resume. Uh, I have a variety of different experiences. Um, I was a police officer for twenty-five years. Um, uh, I went to law school, became an attorney. I created a criminal justice program at a local university. Uh, and I didn't do all this by myself, by the way. I have to give credit to my wife who I met as a police officer on the job. Um, and she's an attorney as well. So we're kind of competitive, I guess. But um, in any event, um, I, I've got budget experience. Um, I run the program, uh, the criminal justice program. It's a budget of over a million dollars. Um, myself and my wife and some other people created the program from the ground up. So we did everything from planning where the lights were going to go to every facet of, of the building that we're in. Um, I, I realize that uh re, reviewing the comprehensive plan is certainly a big task for the Planning Commission. Um, I know how to research. Uh, I, I actually am one of those people that enjoys research, whether it be uh state law, local law, ordinances. Um, because uh they're written in a certain way for a reason, and, and I think that that gives guidance to our commission, like the Planning Commission. Um, I um believe that the town is growing. And I think that a, a solid planning commission needs to be in place to shepherd that growth. Um, it's very, very important uh for all of us as we go forward. And, and you've all mentioned before, there are a lot of issues kind of all coming together at once, and I think uh the Planning Commission is an important part of that. So I would, I would love to get your support to be uh part of the Planning Commission, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Discussion from members of the council, questions for Mr. Angel? Councilman Shockley?
Um, as I'm prone to do, um, my question isn't particularly for Mr. Angel, um, but I would love to know possibly um, how do we best round out this board? So maybe if we have still resumes for the other um, members of the board, um, like, is an attorney or a civil engineer the best addition to what we currently have? Um, so I'm kind of trying to see the best layout for the board in general, knowing we have two really strong candidates coming before us tonight. If we vote on this tonight, I feel like you might have said something about that earlier, but regardless.
Uh, Solicitor Angel?
Just to be clear for the council, um, when an attorney sits on a Board of Directors, public or private, where they sit on a planning, a zoning board, unless they are employed as an attorney, they're not there to give legal advice. They are not there to substitute. It's a skill, and I don't denigrate that skill. But they are not there to give legal advice. Just, just to be clear on that. It is a skill set for sure. It is, it has its own skill set that you bring to the task. But I just want to be clear about that.
I appreciate that.
Than somebody who's practicing energy.
Yep, I appreciate that. Um, but I would think that the skill set, as well as the knowledge, would just come into your position on that board. Um, I don't know wha, how far uh that would be allowed to go. Um, but I, like I said, this is the, the most important board, as far as I'm concerned, in our town. Um, tonight, we happen to have two people coming to apply for it that have fantastic resumes and different skill sets. I'm looking to see which skill set the board needs. Um, possibly it needs both, but if there's a way of kind of looking at that, I'm not an expert on planning, but I do know that the more voices that you have coming from different perspectives, the better off you are in this sort of thing, especially when both of um both of them could be the type of skill sets that could add to this board. So if we have other people who are civil engineers, maybe that's not what we need. Um, although that seems like a very appropriate skill set for the board. So just trying to kind of figure out more, kind of like you said, uh, President Lima, think outside the box. Don't just think this resume is great, but think what best rounds out the group of people we currently have.
If I could just respond briefly to that, I will not be, you know, as the solicitor said, that, that's not my, my purpose for being or seeking to be on this board. Um, it's to be a citizen, um, and not to be a solicitor. If that was the case, I would be talking to Solicitor Angel or the town manager about other things. Um, that's not anything that, that I want to do. I just want to be a citizen. Um, my family is, I want the Planning Commission to, to I think be inclusive of, of everyone. In, in my particular situation, my adult daughter still lives with us and she's disabled. And I want to make sure that those people are heard in town and, and as things are developed um to the extent that the Planning Commission can have some input uh as far as that type of population, that would be one that I would be looking at very specifically.
Discussion from the council? I just want to reiterate, um, this was a board where I didn't even know if someone left the board or was leaving the board until the town manager said when we were putting an agenda together, hey, uh, we've got some people who put their applications in. I was kind of like, okay, um, it's the biggest board in town. It would have been nice to know. Um, so I just, again, in the interest of fairness and transparency and the record that we've done, I believe that this should get its chance to be posted and that other members of the public, and not to mention, we've had applications come in in the past year where people have put other boards and committees they've been interested in planning. Don't forget about those folks. Um, so I just want to be clear about that. It's nothing, nothing against the applicants here this evening. It's just we should, for the two, two of the biggest appointments this, this town council makes, um, should just give that opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Um, up next, we have Mr. Skirka. Just uh make sure the microphone is on and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening all. My name is Glenn Skirka. Uh, I live at thirty-eight Acres of Pine Road in Coventry, Rhode Island. Uh, I've been a lifelong citizen, also served on other boards within the town. Uh, I am a civil engineer. Uh, I was a design engineer for ten years. So I'm a construction engineer now. I still operate as a consultant engineer for design firms and construction companies and um, built a lot of projects in this town. Um, I've been affiliated with, it seems like just about every single one in this town. Um, but however, I have a lot of experience of a that I'm willing to offer.
Thank you. Uh, questions, discussion from members of the council? All right, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Uh, what's the pleasure of the council this evening on planning commission appointment? Vice President Blank?
Um, similar to the Kent County Water Authority, I think we should um ask the clerk to post this to the website. Um, and see if there's any additional names that want to put their name in the ring.
Madam Clerk, could you do that uh this week, please? Thank you very much. Same with the Kent County Water. Thank you. Further discussion? Thank you. Uh, report of the town manager, um, Daniel Perillo. We have two items this evening, discussion and ratification of Curia System contract from municipal court, and item B, discussion and ratification of Coventry Community Center sub-award agreement. Manager Perillo.
So the municipal court is kind of going through a transition right now. Our current uh records management system is over twenty years old. Uh, there is no longer any support for the current record system. So we're looking to go out to bid uh with Curia System in order to upgrade uh our system. Curia is a sole-source contractor. They do approximately twenty-four other municipal courts in, in the state of Rhode Island. Um, they do have access to all the relevant uh sites regarding RITT and so forth. Uh, we did have a department meeting with them. Uh, the solicitor was part of it, just to kind of understand what the process is. Uh, so it's a little, a little in-depth. We have to basically merge all of our current data into their system. Uh, we need training on their system. Uh, obviously, this all comes with a cost. Uh, year one is going to be approximately twenty thousand dollars to log in, get all our data there, get all our training in, and then from that point forward, it's approximately seven to eight thousand dollars per year. get all our data there, get all our training in, and then from that point forward, it's approximately seven to eight thousand dollars per year. The, we've touched base with our current municipal court clerk, our retired municipal court clerk, our municipal court judge. Like I said, the solicitor, Cody, we've kind of got everyone uh on the same page, and we think this is the best way to go forward uh to move the municipal court to the next stage of its career.
Solicitor Angel?
I wa- I want to thank the town manager for including me in those meetings. Um, it's important that our record keeping system um, in the municipal court dovetail with certain state systems. This system interfaces with that. Our present system, the well-designed works on a, off of an access database, which is no longer supported by Microsoft. Um, that's problematic, for sure. Um, in addition to which, the the connectivity with with R I T T and its homogeneity with other systems in the state make it a pretty good fit. It's just a question of how we archive uh and access old stuff and bring over live matters, if you will. It will make it immeasurably easier for the clerks in the long run, although there is a learning curve and there is an upload to this. Similarly, I won't speak for the manager, but we're also evaluating the probate side of this. Um, you know, from a unified court system, there's no chance that municipal courts ever get unified into a state system, but there is a chance, perhaps, somewhere, hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, the probate courts do um, for a variety of reasons. And and it's the same provider. It's a sole source provider. It's not like it has to go out to bid. And they did a great job, the presentation and the follow-up was was great, too. So, anyway, that's my two cents from the legal side.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Uh, did a rep uh from Curious Systems uh solicit us, or did we reach out to them?
I reached out to them.
You reached out to them? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion from the council? Um, so just to to make sure I'm clear, um, the fiscal impact, as I saw, there was an upfront, I think it was, was there an upfront fee?
The total number is gonna be around twenty thousand.
And um, if there's a fiscal note attached to this, where are you saying that's coming from?
The municipal court budget.
Oh, so they have this built?
We're gonna put that in.
Oh, we're putting it in for fiscal twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and but otherwise, the other built-in yearly, you said it was seven or eight grand. Is that already built in now, or is that something that's gonna be have to be built in going?
It's gonna have to be built in going forward.
So we're not paying any yearly fee right now with what we have?
No.
Okay.
Uh, probate judge Belanger's son created our current system twenty-five years ago.
Okay.
So we no longer have that um backup service. So there's nothing, there's nothing, we weren't paying for it, put it that way. There was no expense for our current system.
Okay.
But going forward, no, they will be.
So, so matter, of course, industry standard is, other places are paying like this.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, uh, so the uh town manager is asking for um the council's ratification of this agreement set to begin on April first. Do I hear a motion to ratify?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pasqua. Any further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, four, um, zero on the negative.
Manager Perillo, back to you.
Yeah, so the next one is the uh sub award agreement with the state. I've been uh talking about our community center projects since September. This is the official uh contract that the state sent over. Basically, it gives us the two point eight six million dollars to build our community center over the next two and a half years. Uh, with the agreement that we will utilize that building, but that thirty-six thousand square feet of the annex uh to house uh educational opportunities, workforce development, and health monitoring. So this agreement um just basically solidifies uh that, that uh commitment between us and the state. Uh, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with the state to find out when the money's gonna start coming. Uh, it should be on its way shortly. Uh, R G B, who you guys confirmed the contract with last meeting, has given us a draft architectural design of what we plan on doing. So we're working off that. Uh, there may be an opportunity to receive further funding. There may be some other municipalities that do not accept uh their pro- uh programs that are in place now, so there may be an opportunity to get more money down the road, um, as this gets closer to fruition. But that's kind of where we are right now, the two point eight six million dollars for the Coventry Community Center.
The cost that's listed in here, I think it's fifteen K and change. Is that gonna come from the allocation we get from the state?
Fifteen K, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought I saw in here an amount, um, that there was the cost for the, their, their services, their, their quote in here. Am I, I missing something?
That was true.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was it, that was it.
My bad. Um, sorry about that. It's a hundred and seventy-page packet.
A little thick.
Um, discussion from members of the council? Uh, Councilman Pasqua?
Uh, I think uh maybe some clarification uh for the public, because I I have had this question called twice since uh we made the announcement that we awarded this. Um, and we talked about there is going to be uh programs in place to help people.
Yes.
So the, the question that's been brought to me twice is that uh, is there any part of this that makes it a navigation center? Similar to what they were trying to, uh, the state was proposing at Washington Street. Um, I, to my knowledge, I see nothing in there, but I think maybe just go on the record saying that that's not the case.
Definitely not. No, that, that is not being supported by this program, no. Nope, not at all.
Further discussion from members of the council? Do I hear a motion to ratify the sub award agreement?
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
I second it.
Second by Councilor Shockley. Any further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative. Motion passes.
Moving on to a report of other town officers and officials. Uh, first up, we have Director McLean, planning and zoning. Uh, three items this evening, comprehensive plan update, streetlight update, and zoning update. Um, I'm gonna ask the director to keep it extremely general and high level, uh, given how this is listed on the agenda. If any councilors have specific questions, uh, you can direct them to the town manager and we can have Mr. McLean back to follow up if need be. Thank you.
If I can.
Uh, Solicitor Angel?
You, you can get specific on the comprehensive plan. The other ones are general.
You got it.
Just to be clear.
No problem. Um, thought it was a good idea after some conversations with uh the town manager to give an update specifically on the comprehensive plan. As I believe it's, it's been a while since you last heard from me on it. Uh, the last time you did hear from me on it, I believe we were still waiting for comments back from statewide planning. Um, and the state's approval of a comprehensive plan is, is a step within our process. They generally give comments to whether this would meet their approval before we go through any local adoption process. Uh, unfortunately, the comments that came back from the state suggest that we have some work to do uh specifically with the area of affordable housing as it stands within the comprehensive plan. The previous plan had suggested that as a strategy for affordable housing, we should develop a specific plan to address affordable housing. And statewide planning essentially suggested, this is your chance. Let's see some strategies. Let's put some meat on the bone right now. And that, that, that does make sense to me that that comment came back. Uh, since we've had the formal comment, we have re-engaged with our project consultant, Beta. Uh, and staff have also begun drafting revisions to the plan uh and coming up with specific strategies, specific ideas in affordable housing. Um, and this will take some time to accomplish, you know, and essentially writing an affordable housing strategy for a community does take some time. Uh, generally, you can't do it in a vacuum. Uh, you need to be in touch with your uh community partners. Uh, you need to vet some of these strategies uh with, within the community, within the municipality, and with other uh partners that do this work. Um, the next steps on this are to complete the edits uh in terms of the planning department that we feel uh head us in the right direction, uh, put some meat on the bone. Uh, then uh to begin working with local partners to vet it, uh, going back to the state to ensure that there's some degree of compliance with what they're gonna want to see. And after that occurs, uh, we'll begin the local consideration and adoption process. Uh, which would be that we're gonna bring in the comprehensive plan committee that was established to assist with developing it, allow them to see a, a, a refined product, uh, get any comments they may have, and then it goes through a formal review process of, from the planning commission and getting a positive recommendation from them, and then ultimately here to the town council. Uh, it may be a while uh until we're in that final position. Um, but we're working on it now, and I wanted to give you an update so you had a sense of the timing of when that document uh may be coming back to you in a final format. Um, and then uh underneath the point of a comprehensive plan, uh, it's discussed within the plan itself, and I believe the community's housing goals uh would be furthered by an active C D B G program. Um, I can just be happy to announce that we're making some positive progress with that. Um, that's something that I think will be reflected a bit in the plan, but in general, uh, we're moving forward with re-establishing the C D B G program, uh, specifically the housing rehab program, which is a great resource to community members, the annual application cycle. Uh, and we've been able to uh put ourselves in a position where a new contracted support staff, Jerry Manning, um, is going to be paid out of C D B G administrative funds to help us re-establish that. So we're, we're excited about that progress. I'll leave it there, because I don't want to lead you on any further astrays.
Could you just define C D B G?
Community Development Block Grant, which is the uh, the Federal Government HUD Housing of, Housing and Urban Development Program. Uh, basically monies for uh service providers for low-income folks, uh, uh, housing opportunities uh for qualified income uh folks.
I'm a director. The um, we were awarded a C D B G grant last year. It was for the um, Quidnick par- the, the, the playground, the basketball court, and the parking lot over at where C cap is. That's an example of one.
Yep. So it's been a program that has not been active until last summer, when we had a successful application. Uh, and we are excited to have some energy and momentum to keep that moving um in, in a couple of different aspects with the program. Um, so I don't want to get into any of the details there. Uh, it is something that's within our comp plan, so I felt it was worth addressing. Um, I'll move right on. Um, the, uh, there's an update on streetlights. Uh, as the council may be aware, uh, we'd received some comments from a number of community members with concerns about recent projects that were built without streetlights. Um, you know, I've certainly spoken with some of those community members myself. They were curious to get to the bottom of it. Essentially, the code previously had established that streetlights uh would be a required element in a project when requested by the applicable fire district. The fire districts in the community of Coventry uh essentially pay for the energy that goes to the streetlights. They uh maintain and and ca- you know, provide the ongoing care and maintenance of the streetlights, so this is really within their domain. Um, but we want to make sure that we're building them when we should. Um, we've since, uh, within the last month, had meetings with the, all of the four applicable fire districts um, to get their feedback, and essentially the feedback is that they do want to see them. They want to see streetlights. Um, it would be a rare occurrence where they wouldn't, except for Western Coventry, which makes sense in terms of like the, the layout, in terms of the community character, uh, values that go into it. Um, so we've since re, um, we've amended our subdivision regulations. Uh, this occurred just a few weeks ago in front of the planning commission uh to shift the responsibility that streetlights are required on any project, but the, the streetlight should be installed consistent with the fire department's review. Essentially, we've shifted the burden that the requirement is that the developers have to provide them. And until such time that fire or other staff would waive them or, you know, redirect them, otherwise they're a required element on the plan, which shifts the responsibility. So if fire, for whatever reason, remains silent, that doesn't mean that the project moves forward without streetlights. Um, that was something that all the fire districts were on board with as well in terms of this general approach. So we're, we're trying to basically, uh, you know, s- s- seal that up a little bit and tighten that up a bit. On terms of zoning updates, I'll be very general and broad. I'll suggest that uh there will be some items that will be coming to the council. Um, you may recall all of the zoning work we did in the fall and into the early winter. Uh, some of that zoning work had a specific tier-two category of work that was gonna come back in front of you. Um, you may also recall, recall that we did some work with um uh putting basically a temporary hold or a stop on special use permits. Um, we've since had some successful meetings with the task force. We envisioned bringing back those items, which I would call the lower-hanging fruit, special use permits that we feel pretty, um, pretty ready to bring back to you, that should be converted into an allowed use. Um, there's additional work behind that, the more complex special use permits that would require more thought, more time. We're putting those aside for now. They're gonna need some more time and research, but uh, within the near term, you're gonna see a first cut of special use permits that had been converted to a no in our use table, and we're gonna recommend converting them to a yes with a presentation by planning staff to, so you can understand what's happening and what's going on. Um, that's really to allow some of those, largely it's focused on business operations and allow businesses to keep on running a business that wants to establish here or wants to expand right now. When they look at our code, they're not seeing a lot of opportunity. Um, the more complex uses that require deeper thought, we're gonna do as a second cut. So we're really just trying to get um things moving um back on the tracks with that strategy of putting them on a temporary hold. Um, you'll also uh see additional code work coming to you of the uh, we were successful in gaining additional technical assistance funding to help with other code work beyond the state law mandate work. Um, we're basically gonna be able to present to you, I'd guess, within the, the three-to-four-month timeframe, um, a, a fully thought-through uh approach and strategy to additional code work. Um, you know, there are things in the code that beyond the state law mandates that we've picked up on that we think should change. These are items that previous planning staff and others in the community have suggested this is something we should change. This is the moment to do it. We're making a lot of code changes. We want to get it right. We want to get the code in a good place. Um, I would envision we're gonna take a similar approach where we'll do a bit of a joint workshop um to allow some time to unpack and digest the complex code information before it's in front of you in a formal hearing. Um, so that's something that, you know, I thought was a successful strategy when we did it back in the fall, allowed everyone to basically have the room to breathe, sit at the same table together, ask the questions, get comfortable before it's in front of you formally. Um, so that's, that's our envisioned process. Uh, so you'll see special use permits coming soon. And then there'll be a series of complex code work and uh, and basically the, the groundwork laid with some joint work sessions before they're in front of you in hearings. That's it for my overview. If any questions, any issues, let me know.
Councilman Pasqua?
So this actually circles back to the comprehensive plan, and I, I, I need a, a little bit of a reminder on this. Did we, did we go over budget and like, miss a deadline previously with the comp plan? We had to authorize more funding or something?
No, the thing that was quote-unquote missed was um, with respect to the wastewater plan and not public, giving it the public hearing, a full public hearing.
Okay.
In terms of funding, we did, we did have a discussion about the funding that was required to do the final stages of it in terms of advertising the full plan. Um, and that's some of the technical assistance that he's referring to, but there were, there's some state, but state-awarded funds on that.
And, and so?
I think there was a, an issue with the budget also prior with, with Beta.
Oh.
And a hundred thousand, they authorized an additional twenty thousand without counsel permission.
Is that what you're?
That does, yeah.
That was.
That, that's what I was thinking in the back of my mind.
So the work, the work that they're doing now is, is part of the
Yep.
Money. They're not getting any additional money.
That's, that's.
It's part of what they, we've already paid them.
That's my next question. Did that, is that covering the extra work they're putting in now?
Um, I, I wasn't here when the twenty thousand was added. That was before my time, and I'm assuming that that was for what they thought was uh an increase in effort at the time. Uh, what's essentially what, uh, in my very brutal, root, you know, basic understanding is that Beta's on the hook until we've got state satisfaction. Um, local review process, I think, was understood and has been understood for a while, will occur with just staff. Uh, so when this is brought to the planning commission or local committee and the council, staff will be at that point, um, you know, basically your resource to get that plan into final shape. And you might have, you know, slight differences in your vision. You might have changes you wish to make. Um, I'm holding our consultant to task until we get the state nodding their head. So they're an active engaged partner now. Um, there are parts of this that doesn't make sense for the consultant to write in terms of, you know, generating ideas that we would feel comfortable with for affordable housing, but there's still a lot of work that they're gonna commit to. Um, we've gotten them to do, you know, some of that work already. I don't think they're off the hook. Uh, but basically, the, it's understood and, and they have come to the table. Uh, but basically that it's understood and, and they have come to the table, um, and said, we understand that. You know, we're a partner in this until the state's nodding their head. So that's where we stand now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Solicitor Angel.
Ju- just on the contract, if I may, for a minute to follow up. Um, that additional expenditure that was made without council approval. Was made by, uh, the former manager, uh, Marshant. And it did not come before the council. Um, any augmentation of a contract that requires, um, town manager signature. Signature of another official would come before the council for ratification. That's our process now. And certainly additional expenditures under an existing contract would come before the council. So that is a, is a safeguard in place.
Councilor Shockley.
Um, thank you for this information, and when you're ready to, um, present the plan. Um, I think one issue that, um, community members have is a lack of understanding. Between the difference between low income and affordable housing and what the definition of both are. So I think it would be really helpful not to answer tonight, but as we move forward and we're coming up with big plans for how to do this. Um, just make sure the community understands what it means.
Fair enough, yeah. I, I mean, there, there's deed restricted, low and moderate income, which is what we need to reach. Um, a certain percentage threshold. Uh, everyone in the state is held to the same standard, which is you should try to get ten percent of your housing stock to be deed restricted, low and moderate income housing. Uh, the projects that we get called comprehensive permits, the, the affordable housing projects, they're coming because we are not at ten percent right now. Uh, we're at five percent and change. Um, affordable housing is, can be sometimes interchanged with that, but. Um, you know, affordable housing can just mean an appropriately priced or moderately priced house that allows, you know, of a range of. Different community members to be able to achieve that house. That doesn't mean that a, a, a house that is affordable from a practical perspective is deed restricted. Um, so there are, there, there are two different things happening. We, we, we could use both. We want deed restricted, um, and we want housing that's generally also provides different price points for different people in the community.
Thank you. And even if, um, you know, how those price points are determined and what they may be, I think would be really helpful. Um, I think people's under gut reaction is maybe not, um, appropriate.
I think I understand what you're saying. Yeah, it's, it's surprising the income levels that, um, qualify for affordable housing. Um, I mean, sometimes people jump to this. It's section eight, it's housing projects. It's very far from the truth. Affordable housing as it's developed, at least in the context that we typically see it here. Are pro, uh, units that are deed restricted, they're integrated into projects. Uh, they're not meant to be standalone, they're meant to be integrated. And in general, um, you'd be surprised, I mean, in a very, you know, an average school teacher, uh, is probably gonna be, uh. Eligible for an affordable housing unit. This is, uh, sometimes there's, there is education that's needed around that. So when people hear there's affordable housing coming next to me, uh, they might have visions in their head for what that is. And sometimes the reality is very far from the truth.
Good point. Um, any further discussion, questions for, um, the planning director? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, moving on to the solicitor, uh, we have a couple items, solicitors budget. Arnold Road Landfill PRP Group update, a discussion ratification of GZA contracts, re- the solar array installation. And discussion ratification of general code contracts. Solicitor Angel.
Okay, I'm gonna move through this. I don't have an update on the budget because I don't have the information I requested. Um, the, uh, finance director's working on that. Arnold Road Landfill PRP Group. Um, in the process of readying themselves for the construction project. Uh, Amoresco and the other contractors involved at a site visit. During that site visit, there were, uh, certain defects in rips noticed in the top of the cap. Not the liner. Um, the assurance company has been notified, engineers aware of it. Oddly enough, um. Conventional wisdom seems to think that, that, that the wind has raised havoc with the cap. And that weighing it down, uh, with the solar array. Will decrease the likelihood that there would be these incidental rips in the cap requiring attention. Um, I've asked our, uh, consulting engineer, GZA, to confirm that. So I will keep you posted, but there has not been a breach of the liner. And the rips to the cap are minor. I've seen the photos and I've talked to the site engi- our site engineer at GZA about it. But it was however, brought to the attention of the group. Um, by the construction group for Amoresco. So the partnership is working at a basic level. So, but I did wanna bring that to your attention. I know the council has an abiding interest in things going on there.
Uh, Councilman Pasqua.
So it seems like we're dealing with the rips and, and stuff on this cap quite often.
Well, we, well, we hit part of it with a plow. That doesn't count.
Okay.
That, that, that was at the base, but the to- the top does concern me.
Is there a warranty on this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's warranty and there's an insurance policy. And the manufacturer was notified and the insurance company was notified. They're, they're dealing with it. And they're providing a report to the, um, to the group as to what they're gonna do about it and what they think the causes are. In the meantime, GZA is gonna tell us what they also think the causes are.
Gotcha.
And I'll get back to you with that.
Any further discussion on that item? Right.
So, um, the next item is, um, there's a contract that was included in your packet, as I understand it. Um, which is, uh, from GZA as to the oversight services. For the installation of the solar array. You may recall that we had talked about this at a council meeting. Um, where I had investigated, um. Obtaining their services for purposes of, you know, being onsite during the construction process. So that they could observe in the moment changes to the cap and to monitor the, the. Uh, proposed construction processes to reduce the risk of breach. Um, in not just the cap, but also the gas extraction system and things of that nature. That contract is in front of you. Um, I think, I think it tops out at like sixteen thousand dollars. Um, honestly, I think it's pretty short money. Um, I'm gonna be looking to the, um. The forty percent stakeholders in the PRP group to help with this. They don't have to. Um, but I do think it's, it's short money, even if the town has to pay higher sixteen thousand.
Councilman Pasqua.
So this is a contract basically to have them, for lack of better terms, babysit the, the project.
Yeah, if, if you recall, similarly, when we discussed the school bond. And I recommended to the council that, that, that the council have its own consulting, construction expert to oversee the construction. Project so that, you know, kind of like the old government joke where we don't end up paying for, you know, ten thousand dollar toilet seats. Kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, because, you know, in a building, obviously it's expensive to move plumbing and things like that. But particularly in this area, the, these experts know what they're looking for in terms of stressors being created on the liner in the cap. And in certain areas around the base of the landfill that just should not happen and are detrimental. Um, to the infrastructure of gas extraction and things of that nature. So they, they, they monitor that.
So the, the project itself, it's not covered by like any performance bond or anything that would instead.
That.
Supersede this?
So, so that, so a performance bond is, to be basic. If I go in and I construct the thing and I, and I screw it up, you get to keep my performance bond and fix my problems.
Gotcha.
This is designed to mitigate the risk of a problematic occurrence at its point of origin.
Mm-hmm.
So that during that process, if, if a particular area of the array is installed, they're not just inspecting. As the array is being installed, but they're inspecting after it's installed to make sure that there haven't been any breaches. In that cap at all, so that they're, they're actually, as it's, as, as things are being put on the cap. Making sure that there's nothing ripped, it's being covered.
Mm-hmm. So we're essentially trying to stop the problem by.
Yes.
Using this contract. And if we didn't have this, that we could be exposing ourselves with a performance bond.
Well, then, well, you'd, you'd be exposing your, your use of the policy, which you know that. Use it, you know, the, the, the policies there, like the insurance policy at your house, right? If something happens. Um, but the more your insurance company has to pay in a policy. Uh, your premiums are going to go up, especially if you're, could, especially if you had the chance to mitigate the risk.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Um, just my opinion here, but I, I would prefer that we not vote on this tonight. And we ask the PRP group if they would, uh, contribute towards it first. And if they decide not to, then it come back in front of us. That'd just be my opinion. Because I, I feel like this is a, definitely a benefit to them at the same time. So, um, I, I think it's an expense that they should also, uh, chip in on.
The, the reason why they're, they're hesitant to chip in is because the benefit. Of what comes from the solar array inherits to the town and not to them. So that's what I've been told to this point, but I'll be happy to ask again.
It, I, I can understand that, uh, but at the same time, it's, it's the cap, uh, for a project that they are also ultimately responsible for. And they're making sure that no damage happens to that cap.
Councilor Shockley.
Um, going along with what Councilmember LeBlanc said, um, even though. Once the solar array is up, it is the town that gets the benefit. It would be the whole group that would get the liability. If there was a hole that got covered up or if something happened, correct? So not so much because of what they might get in profit, but because of what they might lose if something were to go wrong. It does seem to me, I do agree that.
Well, again, the general legal theory is that it's activity caused by us that benefits us that puts the cap at risk. That's why they say, why, why should we?
Yeah, I get that. Um, and my question would be also, um, where did we plan on getting the money from? To pay the sixteen thousand?
That was gonna be my question, and given some of past questions I've received. On, um, other items that have similar in, in monetary value of, um. Asking council leadership, do you remember which, where you agreed for this money to come out of if it doesn't have a resolution? Um, so.
Get a fiscal note.
Yeah, I think that would.
Yeah, I mean, if we had a fiscal note, I'd be happy to have voted on this tonight and maybe not have to pay the full amount. Um, but not knowing where the six, you know, like you said. Sixteen thousand dollars or amounts similar to come up very often, um, and they really do start adding up.
Even if it's a thousand bucks, they want, each of them wanna throw in, I mean, it makes, it makes a difference, but. Um, so what's the pleasure of the council this evening?
Carry it.
Uh, I, I would like to carry it for the fiscal note.
Okay. Um, moving on to, uh, discussion ratification of general code contracts.
So you have a contract here from general code. Um, this is a proposal from our code service. This is the parent company of Ecode, uh, three sixty, uh, that warehouses and updates our code. Uh, this particular project is designed to reconcile. Our code for inconsistencies with state law and internal inconsistencies within the code itself. And we would be actively engaged in managing this project because. Um, there are certain inconsistencies in our town charter. When I first came here, there was a belief to some extent that the town charter, um. Had a louder voice in the, in the world of the legislative process as a whole. As it relates to state charter and state general laws than it actually does. There are some provisions in the charter and in the code that are inconsistent. Um, I know very inconsistent with state law, um, on a number of things. These will be pointed out, they'll be reconciled and brought before the council. I, I think the projects overdue. Um, I've heard from a couple of people who are on the Charter Review Commission. Um, and they think that this would be, you know, invaluable for them to have a baseline. Um, you know, again, um, no problem putting this over for a fiscal note for Mr. Sivetti to provide that. Um, we can certainly defer the project until after the, you know, new fiscal year. But this was a road that we went down, uh, because we did notice some of those inconsistencies. Yeah, I'll use my, my department, for example, as, as a, um. Uh, as an example, there is a provision, um, in our code presently. That said that all, um, opinions of the solicitor are to be made public. That is inconsistent with state law in my obligations under the rules of professional conduct to representing my client. I will not give an opinion to a client and release it to anyone unless the client gives their consent to do so. Because that's what state law says, and that's what the rules of professional conduct say. And I have a situation right now where I've had to write. To the State Supreme Court Ethics Advisory Board, advising them of the conflict between. My obligations and responsibilities toward my oath, my client, and state law. As being in direct conflict with the town charter. So, I mean, that's problematic, as you can imagine, and slows things down. So this is a pretty important project, but I, I think, you know, certainly, Mr. Sivetti and I will talk our way through a fiscal note.
Yes, so the plan was to put it in the town clerk's budget. It's been there in years past, just that it hasn't been utilized. So we're gonna just put it back into the clerk's budget for this year.
I believe too, the, um, the upfront of the contract said that. Our code hasn't been really touched since two thousand nine. I think that was the last time a comprehensive kind of review that. Solicitors speaking of, um, so fifteen years, um, and I know there's been. Charter com- I, I think, I think two thousand twelve, there was mention of this being sort of updated, but. Um, I would agree this is well overdue.
And I think, I think the, we would do this with an eye toward making a recommendation to the council. Of, uh, shorter intervals between this sort of reconciliation. So that, you know, perhaps it's done, you know, every two years. It's, it's a lot, um, less of a lift, number one. And a lot less chance, obviously, that we're not in compliance somewhere along the way. And we end up in a lawsuit that really involves having to reconcile our code with other law.
Councilor Shockley.
So charter changes, um, that are made by a charter review committee have to go before the council and then before the voters. How does it work if the charter is being, um, changed because it doesn't comply with state or federal law?
Be, be the same thing. Charter changes would have to go before the voters, code changes would come before the council. Yeah, that, that process must be followed, but I think it's worth noting for the council to know. Those provisions in the town codes that have been rendered impotent. By virtue of superseding law or case law.
And, um, I think this is a great idea, and I would be curious about how that would look, um, you know, definitely wanting to make sure we put. Not sure if we would have to put it through as individual questions for each change we're making to the, um, residents of the town or more of a, a. Broader statement where we could show them the changes, but say. You know, as long as we're not making any changes simply for the sake of changing them. Um, but instead, because they don't comply, I would like to know what that would look like. Um, not part of my agreeing to, um, this or not, and I appreciate that, uh, you already have the takeaway that you'll get the fiscal note before we.
Yeah.
Prove anything.
The, the other thing I'd like to mention too, within our code, um, and I've not seen this anywhere else. We u- usually codes go article, section, provision. Ours go section, article, and then we go back to section and provisions. It's very odd. It's very odd in citation. So as part of this process, I think I'm gonna broach with general code, how do we fix that? So that we're, you know, I, in writing and sending things to other courts, they're like. Is this right? And then they come back and say, oh yeah, we looked at it. It's right, but it's goofy. So, you know. What do you, what do you think? I said, I'll talk to the powers that be and see what we can do.
Further discussion on this? Councilman Pasqua.
So just to kind of circle back to the process for changing the charter, if this. If we find issues, I'm sure we will, that, um, need to be changed because they're not compliant with state law. We put it to the voter because of charter. Is that what I'm understanding?
A- actually, um. A- actually, um, I want to take a look, a close look at that because if it's in conflict with state law, it almost doesn't matter what the voters have to say. It's a mandatory change.
That, that's what, that's my point.
However, our charter says that if you're gonna change the charter, you have to let the voters know. Yeah, they have a say. I haven't reconciled, I haven't gotten that far in my mind yet, but I'll, I'll let you know.
Gotcha.
A, a good question.
What's the pleasure of the council this evening?
Carry it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to resolutions of the council. Item A, Resolution twenty twenty four dash six, vote to release the guarantee known as Green Farm Bond in the full amount of one hundred and sixty eight thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars for the approved development known as Green Farm Estate. This is pages one thirty six to one forty three in your packets. Uh, Manager Prillo, this is, this is an item we've already uh, discussed, I believe.
Yes, we uh, the solicitor fixed the wording in there that was a little inconsistent, so he has fixed the wording in there. Uh, the Planning Commission has uh, voted to release the bond, is getting forward to the council for their final approval for the full amount of the one sixty two, two forty eight.
Thank you. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Councilor Shockley, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pasqua, discussion? Councilor Shockley.
I feel bad, but I don't remember. The only reason we pushed this back was because of some language. I know we just did this, and there was a reason why we didn't um, choose to approve it. Anyone else have a recollection?
I'm looking.
But there, there was a, there, there was a question of the wording in the resolution. And then if I'm not mistaken, I, I don't know if the um, DPW director had weighed in at that time, and I believe he has since then, is that right? So.
Can you just refresh?
There's a question, there was a question about when the bond, the release of the bond should occur. So our uh, subdivision regulation say two years, state law says one year. Uh, so because the one year uh, has passed, consistent with state law, that, that's the reason we're releasing the bond.
Vice President Blank.
So I guess just to confirm here, um, we are now required to release the bonds for all projects going forward in one year? Just want to make sure I understand.
Depends on what the compliance status is.
So I guess related to this.
If there's a, if there's a reason to release it, you're released. If there's not, you hold it.
So uh, we're voting on this tonight because there's no reason for us to hold it. Is that an accurate statement?
They've met, they've met the specifications. Uh, the engineer has said they've met the specifications, went in front of planning, planning passed it, and now it's in front of the council, final approval.
So I, I, I guess what I'm hearing is everybody is on the same page, that there is nothing outstanding for us. There's no reason for us to continue to hold this bond. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
Okay.
Further discussion from the council? I'm just gonna let the council know, I'll be voting no on this this evening. This is in my district. Um, and this has been a perennial issue since I came onto the council. Um, this is Minglewood Drive, which is off of Old North Road. For those who uh, trying to figure out where this is, they title it, they titled developments different names, but that's where it is. Um, I've been in frequent contact with um, residents over there um, who have complained about the um, quality of the build, complaining about the stairs being different heights, um, electrical panels for the bathroom being hooked up to panels for the rest of the house. Um, I've heard about um, foundational issues. And then also, some of you might be aware that this is the neighborhood where the detention pond for water does not work properly. So we are spending one hundred thousand dollars of our ARPA money to fix that because it overflows into the surrounding pre-existing homes of, of, that are not in this development. Um, so I just couldn't, cannot in good consciousness vote to release this bond. I would look like a fool to my constituents, and I have to stand up for them, and they've been saying that, that things are not right with this development. Um, and I just, I, I can't, I can't vote yes. Um, so with all due respect to the Planning Commission, with all due respect to the town manager and the, and the staff in the Planning Department, there are issues here, and I, I know that these residents, uh, whether they live in the development or surrounding it, are very upset and with good reason. Um, Councilor Shockley.
So I, my understanding that I need on a legal standpoint is the issues that you've discussed, are those the types of issues that we hold these bonds for? Like, we hold the bond to make sure that you finish the project.
The specification.
And performance. So it sounds like when you talk about certain things, um, performance of that retention um, basin is not there, and I would have to think if you did things that are outside of compliance, like hooking up electrical systems. It seems to me like it would be the reason to hold the bond. Um, but if I'm wrong, tell me, otherwise I'll be voting no as well.
It's not just a legal question. It's a question to be certified by your building department, by your DPW director and administration. As to the legalities of why you hold the bond, you hold the bond when things were not done properly, and you're holding them to the specification of the project. Seems to be a planning board report here that says things have been done according to specification, release the bond. That's what the report says.
I want to be clear, I didn't just receive these complaints and then just do nothing with them. For the last almost three years, Vice President Blank has come on walk tours, walking tours with me. I know that residents there have contacted him as well. This is prior to this change in leadership and this change in council. We've done walks with Director McGee. We did walks with the former um, town engineer who was an outside consultant, uh, Bruce Hagerman of this. We did walks with um, the residents that live in the surrounding area to that retention pond. Um, and I've also met several times uh, with um, the person who's kind of the de facto head of the homeowners association there, who speaks for a lot of those residents. Um, you know, not to mention that the, the homeowners association hasn't been formally turned over to them as well, uh, which I believe hinges on the bond being released. So there's other things that aren't happening in that neighborhood that, you know, are an issue as well. Um, so I just want to be clear that this has been something that's an issue that has not gone away since I've taken the seat on the council. Um, Councilman Pasqua.
So we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars in repairs for that pond?
Yep.
And isn't that the point of having the bond to retain money in case the build is not correct and we have to fix it or repair?
I would think so.
And so to me, I mean, and this is, I, I guess a question for Solicitor Angel. When we're talking about an infrastructure bond, because it's really, really what it is, right? Like when they're building a neighborhood subdivision, it's an infrastructure bond, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you, you recall that that's why we've changed, um, we are in the process of changing bonding requirements. We don't accept letters of credit anymore. And we're releasing bonds in, in performance bonds in different stages. This pre-exists that. So what was done up to this point, I can't speak to. This is the remainder of what's left. I have no knowledge whether the remainder of what's left is adequate to address whatever the problems are here, nor do I know the genesis of those problems as they relate to the phases of the bond release itself, because as I see it, there are two phases that comprise the hundred and sixty some odd thousand dollar lease. So that's generally speaking, that's what bonds are for. I mean, if.
So as far as the, the bond's applicability, it, I mean, I'm assuming that it has to do with roads, infrastructure, street lighting, but not so much the private residents, like I, it's.
No, 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 that's right. Once people take possession of the residence, it's between them and the building.
Yeah, okay, so I want to, I kind of want to be clear. If we deny it, it's not because the house, the issues inside the home.
Correct.
It's, it's more along the, the community and common areas.
Yes.
That, that are being affected.
Sorry, I should have deleted that. More, more so my point, Councilman Pasqua, was that nothing has been easy about this, and it just seems like everywhere I turn, there was an issue. We had an issue, we had an issue with just getting the sign that says Minglewood Drive put up. These people had trouble getting packages delivered because they, people couldn't find where these, where this road was. Um, we had issues with the mailbox situation. Um, because they now require all new developments around to have CDUs and not have mailboxes per address. We had, there was an issue with that. Um, just so I, I should have eliminated that. I apologize. Uh, Vice President Blank.
I guess just, um, trying to understand from a procedural standpoint, what happens next? If, if this gets rejected tonight to release this bond, the Planning Commission has already approved that this gets released, so help me, can someone help me understand what the next steps would be if this gets rejected tonight?
You have the final say in whether or not it gets, that's why it comes before the council. The council has the final say. The council can defer it and, and speak to department personnel and planning personnel before the council if it wants to try to understand what these different phases relate to and why it was, why you're recommending this be released if there are performance issues. But if the council rejects it, right? The developer has a right to make a demand upon the town that could necessarily involve litigation, the effect of which I'm not going to get into publicly, obviously. But that's what, that's what most likely would, would happen, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, my concern is that from a, a technical standpoint, um, this developer has met all of um, the items that they needed to. I, I don't know from the information that I was given tonight if that's an accurate statement. Um, so I, I think there's some outstanding questions. I don't know if it's the best for the council to just carry this to the, the next meeting so that we can get more answers. Um, or we actually vote on it tonight, um, but that's just my two cents.
Councilor Shockley.
I personally would recommend pushing it to the next meeting. I'd like to hear from our experts um, who run our different town departments to see why they think it should push forward. But I'd also like to know why, if we think it's all done on a community level, we approved a hundred thousand dollars to pay for something that should have been paid for by this developer. So I feel as if we've already decided this project wasn't done. So I, I don't understand how we're coming from both of those different directions. You're all done. You've done everything you had to for this, for these common areas. But we as a town are putting one hundred thousand dollars into a, a part of the project that didn't get done correctly.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to make that clear that it was not my preference to spend ARPA money on this, but when I can't get pre, the previous administration to admit to me that, or, or at least confirm for me if this retention basin was built properly, or if, or the liability is on the town or on, on the developer. I, I can't allow the, the molasses that is bureaucracy to continue to allow these people to be plagued with extreme flooding. I can show you, I can show you uh, videos, I can show you pictures of the makeshift dams that people have had to create to redirect water. Um, I mean, these are just blue collar, hardworking people. I mean, you know, so I just.
And I think we're getting too deep in the weeds. I think what we really have to know is was something done incorrectly that we can keep this bond for? If the answer is yes, then I would like to have this looked at again by our town departments. If the answer is no, based on the laws of how these bonds work, we can't hold it. I have to know that. I have to know if we're, I want to try to protect our residents the best we can and find out if there's a way of doing that within the law so that we don't get sued.
Yes, Solicitor Angel.
Madam President, if I, I can make a suggestion of what I hear from the council, perhaps the best thing to do is to put the matter over to the next council meeting so that the council can hear from the constituent departments as to their observations on this project. And then also to schedule an executive session item so that I can uh, explore more freely with the council the legal ramifications involved in its decision.
Um, so we had a motion and second before us. I don't know if there's an amendment to that motion. Yeah, Councilor Shockley.
Uh, I'll retract, I'll retract the motion.
So I'll, I'll have the department directors uh, reassess and review what was submitted or approved, and have those results to you guys in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Um, is that enough time? I don't know what's involved with, I don't know how you determine whether or not a retention basin was built properly.
I don't know if that's gonna, I don't know if you're gonna have an answer to that, that question.
Because I'm sure there's plenty of things that we could find that hundred thousand dollars on an ARPA fund to spend.
That's springtime.
Yeah. Yes.
Right now, right now it's full. You're not gonna be able to even do any research at this point into that catch basin or retention basin. Right now it's to the top, right to the second.
But from.
We're pumping that out, by the way.
From experience in another area, I can tell you that that sort of investigation gets done at, at a point in the spring where they've dried out and you can get in there and do that.
Uh, Councilman Pasqua.
I, I mean, if we approve money to repair it, I think, I think the answer that I would want two weeks is what do we do, what do we, what do we have to change when it comes to that retention pond to? Yeah.
Those plans are all drawn.
Right, so can, I'd like to see that, and then talk about how we are determining that it's all set and see if there's a difference, is there a gap somewhere, I'm missing something?
Well, the, the hundred thousand that was approved through ARPA was to mitigate that flooding from that area on Old North Road, so that design is pretty much done, and we're really willing to, willing to, ready to go to contract out to RFP for the summer. So that program's moving forward, as of right now.
I get this moving forward. I guess I'm just saying that I just kind of, I want to see the schematics of that program to understand what we have to, what we're doing to mitigate this and how it relates to this retention pond to know what the, what the deficits are of it.
I don't think we'd.
We're not looking to fix it.
We can't fix the retention pond, it's not town property. We're fixing the, if you want to say the swell and the, and the drainage that comes off that onto Old North.
We're, we're mitigating the overflow. So there's an, there was an easement that's been granted from one of these homes to, to allow it to come into and drain into the, the catch basin on the street, the, the stormwater. Great.
Okay, alright.
That's what's happening.
So I, I, I can, I can have the directors reassess their checklists, but to say we can actually get into that retention pond, no. So if, 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 if you want that reassessment from the different directors regarding this, I can have that in two weeks.
I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out like, what's actually happening over there? We have to spend all this money to mitigate flooding. Is it caused by that? It is, there's some changes that can be made in that retention pond where we don't have to mitigate flooding because it's being fixed, I guess.
I'm, I'm not a construction person, but to my knowledge, um, it was built to specifications. Now, whether those specifications were sufficient enough to handle that water, I don't know who the expert is in that field to determine that.
Understood, gotcha.
Any further discussion on this resolution? Okay, item B, Resolution twenty twenty four dash nineteen, tax assessors abatements for January twenty twenty four, pages one forty four to one forty nine in your packet. Welcome. Oh.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, we have uh, abatements in the amount of thirty eight thousand nine hundred and thirty one dollars even uh, from the twenty twenty three real property tax rule. And additions on several tax rolls totaling fif- five thousand five hundred sixty seven dollars and seventy five cents. Questions?
Discussion from members of the council? Do I hear a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I feel bad you stayed so long. I'd like to ask you something, but.
I'll second it.
Is there a, is there a motion on the floor to approve the resolution?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Shockley.
I'll second it.
Second by Vice President Blank. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative motion passes.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, no problem.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty affirming the award of a contract for the removal and installation of the Coventry, uh, the community center floor to DAI restore in the amount of one hundred and forty four thousand four hundred and twenty five dollars. Uh, the community center floor to DAI restore in the amount of one hundred and forty four thousand four hundred and twenty five dollars and sixty four cents. Resolution, uh, is in your packet, starting on page one fifty to one sixty two. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua.
I'll second it.
Second by Vice President Blank, uh, Director Blumenthal.
So the department was awarded, um, funding to redo our floor at the community center. So before we started that process, I knew the building was old. It was built in the early nineteen seventies by volunteers, by park staff. So just in case, I heard that there was many layers of floor underneath, so I had it checked. Um, and it, there was asbestos in those tiles as well as the glue. And there were several layers. Um, so after I told the town manager, he contacted the trust and the trust said that we would need to abate the asbestos from the building. So, um, after talking to different vendors, um, we, a local company was able to do it. They're highly recommended. They do schools, they do hospitals. This is a widely used, used building and it's very urgent we get it done, especially before camp starts. Um, we've been using, uh, the annex for certain programs, so we're looking forward to getting it, our community center back.
Discussion questions, members of the council? Um, I do appreciate you getting creative to get the overages taken care of on this within your own budget. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Hearing no further discussion, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yep.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty one, supporting funding of libraries to the full twenty five percent level. This was passed along to us from, um, Director Whedon. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilor Shockley. Uh, Director Whedon, if you just want to speak to this a little bit? Is the microphone on? Thank you.
Thank you for putting this on your agenda. Um, as you know, our state grant aid is, um. The, the formula to fund our grant aid depends on how much you, um. Give us in our general funds. And so. Two years ago, you gave us a bump in our, um, in our budget. Which thankfully, because if you hadn't done that, we would have lost money. So we're one of the few cities and towns in state. That's actually getting a little bit more money in the grant aid. However, it's not as much as we initially thought because it's not being fully funded at the twenty five percent. So by you supporting this, it's helping all the libraries in the state to get fully funded at the twenty five percent.
Questions, discussion from members of the council on the resolution? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Pasqua? Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Moving on to council president communications, uh, just a few this evening. Um, one, just wanted the council to be aware, we are going to have the, um, Irish flag raised outside town hall for the next two weeks. This is in honor of the holiday. Um, as you know, there's a parade this, um, this Sunday. Kicking off at Ionadis on Washington Street. Um, you know, the council was invited, the town was invited. Um, hopefully we get good weather. Um, it's a very, very short parade. Um, I know that, uh, Councilman Pasqua and Vice President Blank walked last year. It's maybe a mile, if that. Um, you're welcome to join. Hope to see you there. My second item, um, I just wanted to get the council's temperature. Um, the, uh, leadership from the school committee reached out up to myself, the town manager and the, uh, council vice president. About resuming, uh, joint leadership meetings between the town council leadership and the school committee leadership, as well as the superintendent and town manager. Um, I'm inclined to, um, going forward, um. Have those meetings be only in the public forum and have the entire council and the entire school committee present. Um, I, I don't know that I found those meetings to be particularly effective in terms of when we provided feedback on, um. Uh, in terms of, uh, attacking their deficit, uh, projected deficit. In terms of our feedback on, um, the, uh, teacher's contract. In terms of our feedback on waiting to vote on the SRP contract until we had confirmed and finished the fiscal note. Um, and Vice President LeBlanc can jump in here as well, but, um, uh, same thing as well. Um, you know, we were kind of blindsided by the proposal, um, brought forth about the consolidation. Um, that wasn't communicated with us. Um, so, um. I just felt like it's kind of been a little bit of a, a one-way street and I think that going forward, both bodies should just be involved. In these discussions, if we have any joint meetings and that discussion should be on, on the record. Now, given the fact that the public's very engaged in terms of their school department, um, after recent meetings. Um, Vice President Blank, I'll, I don't know if you'd like to speak on this as well.
Uh, I can confirm everything that you just stated, uh, the truth. Um, I, I feel like as, as though these meetings, um, have not been productive. Um, I feel as though, uh, if the school committee has, uh, important information to share with leadership. They could, it could share with the entire council at the same time. Doesn't need to be behind closed doors. Um, so I, I would rather, uh, move to them be way more transparent than they currently are or were in the past. Um, and, uh, the discussion be in the public eye. Just my feelings.
Uh, Councilor Shockley.
So I think just the fact that I can't speak to whether or not things got said in the back. That didn't get mentioned in public or didn't get mentioned in time. Um, I would love it if those sorts of meetings were public and on the record. And different voices could, um, be heard or at least hear. Um, before really important votes have to be made. So I do like that idea.
Councilor Pasqua.
Think it's a great idea. Um, yeah. These, these discussions should take place in front of all the council as we vote together on these issues. So, you know, having a heads up and, and knowing what's happening and giving ourselves time to do some homework, uh, on. On discussions that are happening, I think is, is very prudent, especially considering it's such a huge part of our budget.
Thank you. Um, lastly, I just wanted to give an update, um, on the league, uh, the League of Cities and Towns. They're very active right now as we're in session, paying attention to, um, legislation or proposed legislation. That could attend, potentially affect its members municipalities. Um, so I just wanted to bring a few to your attention to keep an eye on, and I'll speak in very high level terms. Um, one of them had to do with, um, the high heat waste facility. If you remember, there was a huge fight a couple of years ago, um, on the East Greenwich, West Worktown line about that Metasycle risk facility. It turns out, um, the state law that was put in place to kind of block this. Um, doesn't necessarily block all the functions of those facilities. This legislation is looking to block all of that. Um, so, uh, if you're, wanted to take notes, that's House Bill H seven three five seven, uh, introduced by Rep McGaw. So just something to keep an eye on. Um, I know that, um, the town manager from East Greenwich. Was, who is, has represented on the board, mentioned that they spent an exorbitant amount of legal fees to fight that. Um, so I think if it's, if it's a concern for other municipalities, it's not something that we should think couldn't happen to us. The, um, other piece that was brought to our attention was House Bill seven seven six four, introduced by Rep Felix. This would be an open meetings change where, um, it would require every, um, municipality. To, uh, much like we have to do for, um, those who are vision or hearing impaired. It would require that you provide translation services for anyone that reaches out. For any public meeting or any public body you have in town. Um, so conversation was had about asking, what's the fiscal note on that? How many translating services are in the state of Rhode Island? Uh, what's, you know, the cost potentially? Um, it's very loose language. It's, you, do we have to have a translator at every meeting just in case, you know? So there were a lot of questions on that, so I just wanted to pay, call attention to a potentially unfunded mandate here. The, um. The other piece that I thought was interesting was House Bill seven nine two one, introduced by Rep Casey. This was a bill put forward to basically say, if you're a municipality that's reached your ten percent or higher on your low to moderate income housing or affordable housing. You should be able to get more state aid for your school department. Yeah. Um, for those watching at home, five towns in the state of Rhode Island have met that ten percent goal, so. Um, that's it. So, um, I just wanted to call, uh, that to your attention. The other one that was of interest to me was House Bill seven eight nine zero by Rep Stewart. Um, and that basically is saying, um, almost it seems like it would be in violation of state law that Solicitor Angel mentioned this evening. That, um, you would have to disclose at the end of every fiscal year. Any, um, litigation you were involved in, every single associated cost, the result of that case, where it presently stands. Basically, all of that information. Um, so just something else to pay attention to. Um, I think there, there were a lot of questions with that, um, with the league. Um, you're holding the microphone, I didn't.
I'll, I'll wait until you.
Okay. Um. And then lastly, we had a, a conversation on the proposed, um, housing package. We haven't really dived into it too, too deep. Some of them are common sense. Um, one of the pieces of legislation is making it so all of your permitting and licensing services that deal with the building office. So the planning and zoning office are digital. Everything should be digital. That kind of makes sense. Um, others, you know, we want some more clarification on. Um, one where it's basically combining your planning and zoning board and making it into one. Um, that was a piece of legislation that's out there. Another one is also, um. Reclassifying how manufactured homes can be considered in terms of your overall housing makeup. Um, so those are a couple for now that we're watching. They haven't really dived into some of the others yet. One of them was about the maximum number of persons that can live in a home. Some of you may have heard about that. The college communities are making kind of a stink about that. Um. So, um, those are some of the ones that are floating around, but as we hear more about those, I'll let you know. The league, of course, will take a position that would be in the best interest of municipalities. Probably send a resolution our way to endorse and remit to our representation. Um, anyone have any questions, comments? Uh, Councilor Shockley.
Um, I'd just like to ask that you keep an eye on the, um, the pension board. They put together a number of proposals of changes that might be plausible for the two thousand and eleven pension. And that could be extremely costly to the town.
So I had an update on that today. Actually, we had a league meeting. And, um, our sources are telling us that the likelihood of inaction on, on any of that for the next year is high. And the reason being because, um, all fifteen of those recommendations, they might have their individual actuarial analysis. So what they're saying is, well, let's pick and choose a handful of them. You can't.
What a childish way to make.
Okay, you can't, you can't just, what they explained is you can't just combine those and expect it to be the same amount. There's completely different amounts. You know this. Um, and also basically what we were told was. The amount of money that it would have to go into this. Is a similar amount of money that would have to go to fixing a certain bridge that connects to the East Bay. So basically, the governor's office is going to have to choose, does it give this inch to retirees or does he fix the Washington Bridge? So, um, I'm told that they're looking to keep any extra cash of that amount close to fixing the bridge. In addition, we're also told that, um, there was a projected surplus in this. But now we're down to, as we get close to the end of the fiscal year, about thirty million dollars. And there's about five hundred million dollars of requests for that money. And not to mention, we're still technically in the negative. Um, but we are quote unquote sixty percent funded versus the forty percent we were at back in twenty twenty eleven. So, um, there's a lot of incentive and a lot of chatter to do nothing is what I'm hearing. So, but I appreciate your point. It's very timely. It just came up today. But the league is paying attention because we all know on a dime, someone could turn around and throw legislation in to change that. So, good question. Uh, well, anyone else have a question? I think. Anyone else on the council? Uh, Solicitor Angel.
Uh, getting back to the interpreter proposal for a minute. Would the council have any particular objection to me speaking against that bill if it goes to committee? Not as solicitor for Coventry, but as an attorney, and I'll tell you why. In representing municipalities, to impose. Interpreter services funded or unfunded mandate on municipalities would essentially. Give the lack of interpreter services if you couldn't get an interpreter, a pocket veto over an open meeting. What if it's budget night? What if it's some other, what if it's an emergency that you folks need to address? Wouldn't be able to do it if you couldn't get interpreter services here. I'm shaking my head on that one. And you all know that it's very difficult for me to struggle to find words, but I'm struggling.
Uh, Councilman Pasqua.
Yeah, I'll, I'd also be interested in hearing, uh, what we would be exposed to as far as liability. Because, I mean, I don't know sign language, you know, and, uh. And I don't know these other languages these people may be speaking and the information they be, may be putting out there. In, in times where public is giving feedback, are we liable if the, if they're not sharp on their skills? You, you know, I mean, I've seen things before where that's been a problem. Somebody's just signing gibberish.
Yeah.
You know, so. Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. But, you know, I just, I, I, I think. I'd, I'd want to hear more about what kind of exposure we can be putting ourselves in by putting somebody in front of us. That's relaying our message that we don't really know if they're relaying our message.
Um, any further comments, questions, discussion on the league legislative update? Alright, I'll keep you posted on that. I, um, I serve as chair of that subcommittee, so pretty intimately involved. We meet almost weekly. Uh, moving on to council business matters carried over, uh, update on Coventry Nutrition LLC in regards to their Victorling license renewal. Um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Manager Pearl, I believe we had continued this because. The applicant had requested more time with respect to her tax letter. Do we, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have an update on this? Oh, she's on, okay. Hi, just unmute yourself.
Hi.
Name and address for the record.
Yep, uh, April with Coventry Nutrition, forty seven Sandy Bottom Road.
Great, thank you. Um, yes, I believe at the last, last time we spoke to you, you requested, uh, continuance, just that you were working on getting some. Last, uh, remaining paperwork for the application.
Yes, so I did finish paying everything that I had to pay last week. Um, one of my checks wasn't cleared yet, so I did call them. And they did not respond to me until yesterday. And everything was paid, but she did request me to, um, do February's meal and beverage taxing. Um, so that way I was caught up because that's due the twentieth of this month. She wants that cleared before she sends out, um, the letter of good standing. So I just sent that out today. So I just have to wait for her to get that, clear that, and then I should be able to get the letter of good standing.
Okay, um, so are we thinking just pair it till twenty sixth? Okay. Um, thank you very much. Sorry for the wait.
No, that's okay. I, I actually got on at six fifteen. I realized it was six o'clock, not six thirty. I'm like, oh no, I hope they didn't call me already. I'm just gonna wait.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
No, that's okay. No problem. Thank you. You too. Thank you.
Moving on to public comment for undocketed items, so there are members of the public, um, just come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Ronald Flynn, twenty one B, Coblen Town Road, um, speaking as the chairman of the planning board. I feel your frustration with retention ponds. I have learned so much about retention ponds in the last three years. One thing I have learned, I've talked with Joe Levecq. The calculations that are approved by the state, when we get these six inches storms in twelve hours, they all fail. I'm out on these projects every week. I do a weekly run every single week and check every project. And when we get that six inches of rain, there was one retention pond on every project that didn't fail, and that was Station Street. They're not calculated correct. I don't know whose fault that is. If the developer builds to specs and the, and the state approves it. I don't know where we stand with it, but believe me, I just wanted to come up and say, I am frustrated as much as you with these retention areas and it needs to be looked at. So if the calculations need to be increased by the state, that's where we need to start.
Alright, thank you. Any members present here in council chambers, uh, public comment? Yep, um, we have someone on Zoom, just. Yep, um, we have someone on Zoom. Just unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
God, uh, I'm for Cider Lane, Greenboro, Rhode Island. I've been on since six o'clock, and I thought I was on the docket today to renew my food truck license. I own Kona Ice of Warwick slash EG. And Elizabeth sent me the stuff today. Did I miss it? I've been on since.
Yes, I'll, I'll stop you right there. Your license was approved.
Oh, thank you. Okay, have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, final call, public comment on undocketed items going once, twice, three times, public comment on undocketed items is closed. Moving on to introduction of new matters before the council. Item A, approval of Narragansett Electric and Verizon New England Incorporated to be granted permission to locate and maintain poles, wires, fix and fixtures, including the necessary sustain and protecting of fixtures to be owned by and used in common by you petitioner along and across the following public ways. A, Benoit Street, pole in the middle of customer's property proposing to replace slash relocate pole three, ten feet south. And B, Jack Pine Road, installing forty feet CL three pole, zero to fifty, fifty-two feet west from pole four. Do I hear a motion to approve the permission?
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilwoman Pasqua, discussion? Councilwoman Capaldi, you're in the seat now that has to. You have, you have to take over that. I'm just kidding. Um, any, yeah, any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And item B, sewer system connection application, The View at WG LLC, owner slash applicant, six seventy-eight Center of New England Boulevard, West Greenwich, Rhode Island, AP one, lots four and five. Uh, we're considering approval of the will serve letter this evening. Um, so to get started, do I hear a motion to approve the will serve letter?
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Hi, I just wanna introduce yourself for the public.
Sure, Brian Laplante on behalf of the applicant. And um, I guess you've already taken a vote and, but are you having discussion now?
We have not voted.
Okay. So briefly, this project is located in the center of New England. Um, it is across the street from Walmart on Center of New England Boulevard. It actually houses the sewer pump station. And despite that, um, that you know, contribution to the system, the town of West Greenwich lacks capacity, sewer capacity. And for that reason, we're turning to the town of Coventry to provide that capacity, subject to conditions that were imposed by the town engineer as reviewed and supplemented by your solicitor. And so um, the the subject project is a residential apartment project and the um, the timeline surrounding it is likely later this year in two thousand twenty-four. And again, the letter has been drafted by your town engineer, reviewed by the solicitor, and with input from my client, and we find it satisfactory. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. I also wanna mention that we appeared before the sewer subcommittee back in November, and they unanimously um approved a recommendation um to this, to the council positively in favor of this.
Discussion, members of the council, Councilor Shockley?
So do I understand correctly that there is an apartment complex in West um West Greenwich that would like to utilize some of our sewer capacity? And pay us for said utilization?
Precisely.
So I am gonna try not to giggle, and I'm gonna stop talking now.
Further discussion, questions, or members of the council? Um, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Moving on to executive or closed session items, uh, this time I'll entertain a motion to go into executive for the following. A, executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two dash, excuse me, forty-six dash five A one, rediscussion on police recruit to say injury. I'm gonna read them.
Okay.
B, pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, for litigation matters, re Nicola C. Cambio, trustee at all, V. Commerce Park Realty LLC, and Matthew J. McGowan as receiver for Commerce Park Realty LLC at all, V. Commerce Park Management. Pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, for litigation matters, re Social Holdings LLC, V. Town of Coventry. Pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, for litigation matters, re Town of Coventry, V. Anieri Realty Incorporated at all, AKA eleven hundred Main Street slash Coventry Mar, and re Ayesha LLC, at all, V. Coventry, V. Town of Coventry. And lastly, pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, for litigation matters, re Town of Coventry, notice of violation dam number one seventy-six and OCI dams twenty slash seventeen.
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President Blank?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Shockley. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thanks Cody. At this time, I'll seek a motion to come out of executive session.
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilor Shockley. Clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
I'm gonna say four in the affirmative, one in the negative. Motion passes.
May I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Manager Prillo for executive session, item A. Can you please confirm that he was notified, provided opportunity for notices?
Yes, Daniel Toussaint was notified via email regarding the meeting tonight and he declined to attend.
Solicitor Angel on item E?
So on item E on dam number 176, we did speak in executive session about a consent agreement that I proposed to the council enter into concerning dam number 176. Councils had a chance to review that consent agreement and I would ask the council in executive session to vote to approve the agreement and for the council president to affix her signature to that agreement.
This time, I'll seek a motion to approve entering a consent agreement regarding with Rhode Island DEM on dam number 176.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilor Shockley?
Second.
Second by Vice President LeBlanc. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Members of the public, the council met in executive session to discuss the five items listed on the agenda. A discussion was had, no votes were taken in executive session. At this time, I will seek a motion to adjourn at 9:38 PM.
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilwoman Pasqua. All who are in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? The ayes have it.
You need to say.